Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the regular session of City Council to order for February 25th. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening again for those that have just joined us. Let's go ahead and jump right in here. I do want to make one announcement right off the top, and that is I've been fairly lenient with my three-minute rule, but because meetings have been going closer to 11 than maybe nine, I'm going to enforce my three-minute rule more so than I have in the past, so I just want to forewarn everybody on that going forward here. So let's go ahead and move to roll call.
Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Acuna?
There.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Okay, quorum established. Brief announcements by the City Council. I will start to my right.
All right. I attended several different events and meetings this week. First was the 14 Forward Housing Tour in Marysville, and Cleve was also there, as well as Supervisor Heidel, Supervisor Candidate Wendy Thompson-Thomas, and lots of staff from the County Health and Human Services Department, as well as volunteers from the Lighted Candle. And this was a tour of an emergency transitional housing facility that the county developed, Yuba County, developed on a piece of property that they owned, and it was actually in a really ideal location for this type of facility. And it was essentially tough sheds with no utilities or septic or anything. And they set a timeframe for getting people transitioned into different housing options of about six months. And it was very interesting. It definitely got the ideas flowing, and they had some really good results, so that was great to see. And then the next day, I went to a public safety presentation down in Sacramento that was hosted by the League of California Cities. And that meeting was in regards to the Keeping California Safe Act of 2020, which will be on the November ballot. And this bill basically aims to fix some problems caused by the 2015 prison reforms. I think a lot of people don't realize, and I was shocked when I found out, that the 2015 prison reform bills declassified a lot of violent crimes as nonviolent, including, just to list a couple of the many, rape of unconscious or intoxicated persons, trafficking a child for prostitution, assault of a police officer with anything other than a gun, shooting at inhabited cars and dwellings, and felony domestic assault, or felony domestic violence. So I believe that the Police Department will have a presentation to the public in the coming months, but in the meantime, if people want to look into this, they can go to keepcalsafe.org. And then I also sat in on a Planning Commission meeting and attended the Parks Commission meeting and saw Jennifer Chapman's presentation, which is great, so, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Kara, and thank you for attending both of those as well. I really wanted to get to the Marysville one, and my counterpart on Secog was, I think, one of the hosts, and just timing-wise didn't work out for me, so thank you for attending. Patty?
Well, I too wanted to go to that, but I managed to get the flu, so I just have missed the last two weeks of my life.
I know how that goes.
I apologize. I did go to the Battle of the Badges the other night, and I also attended a fire safe meeting, so I'll -- more on when we get to my report.
Great.
No comments at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. First, I would like to thank whoever in our staff and our esteemed, my esteemed colleagues is responsible for motivating Caltrans to finally clean up and repair the eastbound Highway 50 ramps at Mosquito Road. The fence that's been a total mess has finally been replaced, and I thought, well, that was good. That took about two years. And to my delight, I saw that Caltrans also had finally wiped out all of the dead junipers and trash and what have you that is long overdue. I know last year, I joined a long list of mayors that had begged various Caltrans District Three Supervisors to try and get that mess cleaned up, so however that's taken place in this last two weeks, thank you very much for those efforts. It is greatly appreciated by the City Council and all the business owners on Broadway. Secondly, more importantly, Cleve and I spent most of the morning yesterday in a meeting with PG&E and CalOES and all of the emergency services providers for Eldorado County to discuss what PG&E's plan is going forward for the 2020 season, and we also discussed a number of things that didn't go well in the 2019 season. I will absolutely give credit to PG&E, Michael Lewis, who is the Senior Vice President in Electric Operations, who's been with PG&E for 18 months, and they brought him out of retirement from the South Coast, Florida, to come here to California to help PG&E regain its status as an operational utility. He does seem to have the background that will very much be in our benefit. He understands from the field into the corporate world what needs to take place, took full responsibility for the failures that occurred last year, recognized the impacts to this entire community and the entire state, that we had a very open and honest two-hour discussion. The things that I was most impressed with is they've also brought in what they call a senior local customer experience executive. While that sounds rather strange, what he actually does is understands how the circuits connect out into the community, kind of the thing that was lacking with the Caltrans item that we just had. And he understands, in Eldorado County, for example, where you need to keep the major stores and firehouses and public buildings in service. So that was something that very much was missing all through last year's power outages. We were dealing with literally folks that were in a bunker in San Francisco that had no idea where Placerville Drive was or Highway 50 was for that matter. So that's a huge improvement. So we look forward to working with the Vice President, Mr. Lewis. We have his personal contact information. I intend to follow up with him. Since this is a huge issue, we are in a very dry season already. I ask the question if they are prepared for power safety shut-offs to occur much earlier. They are planning right now for the possibility that that could occur as early as September. EID was there as a partner, and they were, EID representative reminded PG&E that without PG&E, we do not have water to drink or water to fight fires. Again, good receipt on PG&E's part. A couple of the things that Cleve and I pushed on yesterday was a return to PG&E's regional management, so again, we have folks that understand this here foothills are not the Sacramento Valley. We have succeeded, I think, kind of accidentally, but I'll take it, to get PG&E to accept a hardening, that's their new term, of the transmission line that runs from Diamond Springs to Placerville Substation. Last year, that was out a number of times, which just added to the delay and extended the spread of the outages. They have committed to making sure that that line will be serviceable in the 2020 season, and that's a huge step, something that should have occurred years ago. They have also committed to us at this meeting that they are actively working on redesigning the feed to Marshall Hospital, so that it will no longer be involved in the power service shut-offs. They are committed to a faster restoration, and we also asked them to, again, push for regional leadership, and a leadership that recognizes that Eldorado County and Placerville specifically do not lie in the same fire hazard and wind hazard areas as Napa, Santa Rosa, Chico, Oroville, the Feather River Canyon. We are not that kind of fire weather or wind country, so they were --
What was there? Did they have a -- I'm really interested to know if you got any response on that particular --
Total admission that they were using a massive global approach to shut off needlessly thousands of people instead of hundreds of people.
But you've been trying to tell them this for months and months and months, so you've got this fellow to understand, you think?
Yes. He admitted that last Thanksgiving week, they had planned to shut the power off, and it was at that, those last couple of power events in November that they realized that they needed to be, his word was, more surgical with their approaches. So for the moment, we have them on the right track, and I thank the mayor for his trust in appointing me to this duty, and I look forward to working with all the folks in our community services to follow up on this.
Thank you, Mark. And again, I think from the city and for everyone, thank you. Your experience, your background, your dedication on this issue is unique, and very thankful that we have your, you know, your background on the City Council and fighting for us, so thank you for doing that, and Cleve as well. Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments on my end. I know Mark had given me an update on this before, and that was, I got a judge for the Lions Club, be a judge for their annual speeches that they do with Eldorado High students, and this year's topic was homelessness, and, you know, what are some of the things that we can do, and the students just did a terrific job. I mean, there was five contestants, and they all, you know, we could have used them to have a round robin with in order to have a great discussion on homelessness and policies as well. They really did their research, and one young lady moved ahead, and if they're able to move all the way through, essentially to finals, they'll get about $21,000 scholarship towards college, so fairly significant. This was sort of just the first step in the rung going up, but so there's some really good stuff going on, so Eldorado High should be very proud of that as well. And then I know this will, we've gotten some emails, and we've had some initial discussion or at least comments made in the public, and that is on this issue of a national park in the greater Placerville area. And it's gone to Parks and Rec, and they've had some feedback on that. And when it comes up, so just as a, you know, I like to have a discussion on that, whether it's now or whether we do it under future agenda items as potentially bringing that up for another, for our, for a presentation to City Council. Didn't know if anyone had comments or --
Mayor, if you would like, we have just a brief report that Terry Zeller could give on the results of that meeting.
Yes, yes.
He's prepared to do that if you would like.
That would be great.
Whenever you want, if you want.
Actually, yeah, let's go ahead and do it now. Because I think part of that, too, is we have a, we have a good, we have an audience here. Two and a half hours later, we might not have the same amount of people still sitting here, so, yeah, let's have the conversation now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Terry Zeller, Director of Community Services, and I'd like to read an email that I received from our Rec and Park Commission Chair, Jackie Noe, and it was concerning the presentation on the National Historic Park, which was agendized on the Rec and Park Commission last Wednesday, which was the 19th. So I'd like to just read her text from the email here. It says, "Dear Mayor Saragosa, the Recreation and Park Commission heard the proposal for the National Historic Park. I wanted to share my personal thoughts from the meeting. The Commission hears proposals, and typically, they are ideas, and the person wants staff to develop their ideas into a plan. This proposal was no different. The presentation lacked any clear plan or path to fruition and had no financial plan. The Commission typically directs the person to return with a plan, including financials. An attempt was made to do this, however, it was difficult to keep the conversation focused. The presenter and audience kept bringing the discussion back to the Clay Street Bridge project, and a partner in the project requested the city take their application for the ketchup and mustard buildings, which really were not the focus of the agenda item, which was the concept of a national park. I do not think concerns were addressed. When the issue of increased traffic was raised, the response was Placerville already has traffic. When asked how this designation would affect personal property rights, such as the old EID ditch running through one's backyard, the answer was it would increase opportunities for funding. I continually pressed to understand the exact borders of this proposal in the city of Placerville, and the response was the entire Highway 50 and 49 corridors. I tried to lead the conversation down a path of information to return to the Commission, such as a letter of intent from the National Park Service, because all of this would be for nothing if they are not interested, and a specific list of grants that would pay for this development. The presenter did not seem optimistic that such things could be achieved or a willingness to do them. I tried to come away with a positive outcome. I proposed to the presenter that the national park idea may take a long while to develop, but in the meantime, they could work on enhancing the historical experience in Placerville through interpretive signs. The presenter's response was that she was not interested in working on that, she only wanted to work on a national park. One of my fellow commissioners made a motion specific to the presenter's request, and that was not to direct staff to participate in their working group at this time. The motion passed unanimously. I believe this decision was based on the fact that there was no real plan presented, no financial plan presented to pay for the idea, unsatisfactory answers to questions, and no real effort has been put into developing the idea yet. There simply was not enough information presented to make any informed decisions or recommendations, and it's signed sincerely. Jackie Noe, thank you."
Thank you, Terry. Council, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on whether to bring this up. I figured it was going to come up, so we should just have a conversation.
Mayor, if I could just suggest, at this point, we should probably note that you can have a discussion on whether or not having to add this to the future --
Correct, yeah, not on the substance of the actual --
Yeah.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor, would that be in lieu of the proponent of this project attempting to squeeze this multiple pages of information into three minutes this evening?
Yes.
Because I don't think that's acceptable to anybody.
Correct, correct. I think I had had a --
There's a lot of pages.
-- an email with Ms. Chapman saying, I didn't think three minutes would probably suffice for her to go over this, you know, that we could bring it up to, you know, for discussion, to have it come before us in a more, as a presentation, whether or not, or, you know, if we think it still needs time before we have that presentation to the City Council.
So we'll talk about that under future agenda, I think?
Under item 14, or you --
No, I, we can do it now.
So I get, let me understand, the question is, do we want to make this a future agenda item?
Correct.
We're kind of bringing future agenda item forward for this one since it's now.
Correct, yeah. I thought it'd be good to have it now, just so we have more audience here.
I have another comment. I attended the meeting, and I thought that Jennifer did a ton of research. It was actually a great history lesson. I really liked the idea of kind of linking all these different historical sites that we have in the region under an umbrella, like a Parks umbrella. However, there were, you know, as Jackie mentioned in her letter, there were a lot of details that were not fully developed yet. So I think the next, you know, mostly with partners, a lot of these assets that would be part of the park are owned by either organizations or individuals or the city. So I think I would, before I consider if it's something that the city wants to move forward with, I would really like to see that other partners were on board.
Right.
Because otherwise, it's just not going to go anywhere.
Right.
So that's, I mean, that's what I would think the next step would be before, you know, we have another presentation.
And how do we find out that information?
Before it comes to us?
Yeah.
Well, I think that would be incumbent on the potential, the proposer to have that in front of us, or, you know, we can hear it as is. I think that's why I just wanted to raise this, whether it's in the same format that Planning Commission, or excuse me, that Recs and Park had this, or whether or not, you know, we wanted to wait for, quote-unquote, a more cooked --
Has the, for lack of better words, the person with this presentation requested that we have, we hear it at the City Council at this time?
No.
Well, I will say that she did make a request, I believe, to former Mayor Acuna at one time, and then it was, came out that they should go to the Recreation and Park Commission first.
That's true.
But there was a previous request to the City Council.
That's true. So we're actually following the process quite well, when you think about it. This is exactly where it should have gone, this to Park and Rec, because that's what this is a part of. And so we have done that step, and then so the decision would be to, is it the point where it would need to come to the Council?
Well, okay, so I, I'm going on Jackie Noe's, who's chairman of Parks and Rec. To me, she's making some recommendations that maybe, and I think that Kara just addressed them too, that we need to get some answers before we have, with everybody standing up and talking and --
Are we getting too far afield here?
I think we are, and I've seen the email that Ms. Chapman sent to the city clerk. She intends to speak tonight at opening a public comment. Perhaps you should allow that to take place and then decide if you want to put it on the agenda.
Okay, we can do that. All right, thank you. Thank you for indulging me on this.
And that would be in the three minute within --
That would be within, yeah, under seven, 7.2.
That would be my prayer.
Yep, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow, city attorney.
He does a good job of that.
All right. So let, okay, so that's 3.1. Mr. Driscoll, do we have a closed session report?
We have nothing reportable in closed session tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, item five, adoption of agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any changes? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, tonight, we have no ceremonial matters. So item seven, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. And again, I ask everybody just to please try to stay within that three-minute timeframe so we can get through everybody judiciously and not have other people waiting. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and, Mr. City Manager, do we have any written communication?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we just want to bring one thing to your attention. This has been something you have requested for some time. I asked the city clerk to do a brief report at this time under written comments regarding PRA requests that have been received over the last two weeks. So if you would indulge us to do just a brief report on that, and then we can proceed with oral comments.
Thank you, Cleve. Actually, I'm going to go back to the beginning of the year, and then I think going forward, we can, you know, I'll have a report for you regarding, you know, the previous two weeks, so I'll just give you a quick report. I'm going back to the beginning of the year. Seven people have requested various cannabis applications from early January to today, those being Andrea Aranda, Tyler Champlin, Susan Emile, Macy Newell, Adrian Heim, Max Del Real, and Kimberly Cargill. This was a large volume of documents to prepare for the initial response, roughly two hours of legal counsel's time and 22 hours of staff time. A voluminous request for records was received February 12th from the Wapoomnees Tribe, a tribal council, which appears to be related to Old City Hall. This request will take a considerable amount of time for staff to locate, review, and prepare a response to. We'll keep you posted on that one, but that's my end of report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions?
I would ask the city clerk to read, if she doesn't mind, the list from the second request. It's a full page.
I do not have that with me, unfortunately, but it is, I believe there --
It's huge.
It is huge. We may be trying to get some more clarification on what they're seeking exactly, but there are, I know, maybe 18 keywords that they are requesting be searched. It's just very extensive, and I'll leave any more questions up to the city attorney on that one.
Thank you. Or Cleve, do you have that, that list?
We do have it here, if you, the city attorney has it. Either one of us could read it if you would like us to.
Well, I don't know that we need to.
We've had a request, so.
Well, the request is such that it's going to take hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of staff time, perhaps, and the question is, what are they looking for? What good are we spending these public dollars?
Involve what?
Well, and having staff not be working on other projects that could be helpful to --
Exactly, and kind of a ballpark figure of how much this would cost.
Issues.
We're in the process of trying to determine how many documents potentially may be responsive to this request, and at this point, I have no idea what the cost is. I know that we're probably, I was on a conference today with the IT manager, as well as our outside counsel on this, and he indicated that on some items, there may not be much of anything, on others, there could be thousands of hits that come up as you're going through your electronic records. So it's hard to say in this one. And the request is voluminous, requests a lot of things, all referring to a number of phrases that they've listed, and I mean --
So it's not just one step?
I'll read it if you want me to, but it's going to be boring.
Sure, why not? I don't mind boring.
There's no problem with reading it, is there?
No, it's a public record.
Then, then I would, I would like people to hear what these requests look like for our staff.
Okay, I'll read it, bear with me. The Wapoomnees Tribe requests all records within the city of Placerville and the city park service's holdings of communications, all documents and things, written or electronic, drafts in progress and completed, to include emails with attachments, special reports, closed session minutes, and action items, lease agreements, MOUs, MOUs in the process of being authored, real estate contracts, grants, application for grants, surveys, engineering reports, RFPs, RFQs, city council agenda items, city planning agenda items, city website postings, photographs, brochures, handouts, legal reviews and discussions by any outside counsel, contracts with outside counsel, legal reviews by inside counsel, money spent, expense reports, lawsuits, legal proceedings, list of contractors providing maintenance service, items pertaining to CEQA dated from February 6, 2020, to January 1, 2014 pertaining to the following words/ phrases: Old City Hall, Confidence &amp; James, Mustard &amp; Ketchup, 487/489 Main Street, Old Courthouse, Old Post Office, Blue Ribbon, Lemon Check, Wapoomnees Tribe, NEA, FPPC, Historical Society, Eldorado County Museum, Mary Corey, Carol Sexton, Chris Payne, Aaron Young. Included in this records request, please provide an inventory of electronic directory searched and results based on each word searched. That's an essential request.
All right, thank you. I think, just want to underscore the amount of work that goes into some of these when they're sort of a catch-all, not very specific, but really just a huge request for information.
And not all the items listed are necessarily going to be subject to public records disclosure. Some of them are obviously exempt.
Correct. Mark, did that --
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. That's an astonishing amount of information being requested.
Okay, do we have any other oral or written communication?
No.
Okay, we'll move on then to item 7.2, oral communication. If you have, again, if you'd like to come forward, if you have an item not on the agenda, now would be the time to make those comments heard to the City Council. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Adams, and I've lived in this county for 45 years. I'm currently homeless, and I'm just curious, again, I've come before you before, why there still is not a full-time, year-round shelter, or why aren't, why aren't any of you doing anything, and why aren't the border supervisors doing anything? I mean, I went to Sacramento recently, there's six shelters there. There's tons of things going on there. There's affordable housing there, and here, I don't see anything going forward. I just don't understand why there's not anything being done. I mean, I hear about things being done, but I don't see any results. If you go out, I mean, there's a shelter, part-time, five days a week, put on by the churches here, that is, I mean, tonight's, they don't put it on, like I said, five nights a week, they don't put it on on Tuesday and Wednesday. Tonight, when I leave here, I'm going out to a tent, and I just don't understand why there can't be a shelter for the people of Placerville. Like I said, I've been a resident of this county for 45 years, there's no shelter in Tahoe, there's no shelter here, Alamo Hills, and I just ask you to try and do something for the homeless here. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Members of council, Mr. Mayor, I'm Don Vanderkar, long-term resident of the county and somewhat active in various aspects of the county's and city's work. I have spoken to you before, I'm gonna give you a summary rather than detail to save some time that the mayor's been concerned about. People out there are suffering in the cold. It's getting warmer, however, it is still cold, and they are still suffering out there. Forcing them to move and relocate and otherwise harassing them does not help the matter of dealing with homeless people in the streets of Placerville. Shelter for homeless people has been proven across the country to be the first step in getting people out of dependency and get them back on their feet and being productive citizens. They need at least that opportunity here in Placerville. There are resources out there, we read about funding through the state and the, and the federal people, and there's also resource here in this community in terms of volunteers. The churches were just mentioned by Bob. The churches do, bust their fannies, trying to provide as much shelter as humanly possible. But it is not up to the, to the churches to do this. They're doing it out of their own goodwill, and public entities, as I understand, have a mandate relative to public health and safety. I think the city has to also apply some human concern to the situation. And in the meantime, the armory sits there, not being used. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maureen Dion Perry with the Western Slope Coalition for Affordable Housing and Homelessness. I hope I'm gonna get three things in tonight. Greetings to everyone, good evening. I'm here to also follow up on the excellent visit to the 14-4 Wood temporary homeless housing that has been built in Marysville. It was an impressive situation in my mind. We had a great group of people there, a lot of energy. And in short, the message of the mayor of Marysville and the, one of the supervisors from their, board of supervisors, was, in short, stop talking, just do something. And I think we're really at that place right now. We have been talking and talking and talking, and we have nothing. We really have nothing. We are behind the eight ball, seriously. I know people are worried about money. What they said about money was it took $190,000, $80,000, $90,000 to get that village put up. And they got sponsorships and fundraising, they more than got back their investment. And in addition, it allowed them to fund additional homeless services. How can you go wrong? You know? An investment that you get back, and I believe that our community will do that for us. Second, on my way in tonight, there was a news piece about Governor Newsom's recent executive order about the Placerville Armory. And in that, it said that the deadline for cities communicating and coordinating with the state on using this property was the end of February. That's three days away. I hate to see us lose this opportunity to do something with the armory. There are millions and millions of emergency housing dollars available. So, last but not least, we are having a community town hall, and I will leave the invitations and announcements here for you. We've been working with Bill Robey, who will be talking about the link between philanthropy and affordable housing and homelessness. John Haddal will be speaking about the 14-4 Wood project, and what can we do here in Eldorado County. And Cheyenne Purrington will be speaking. She's the director of the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, about their experiences, and they are coordinating our coordinated entry program here. And so, we want to hear about how that's gonna work for our folks here in Eldorado County. So, thank you very much, and in short, let's act. I think we can bring the community along. We really need to do this.
Thank you.
I'm Lloyd Ingles, good evening. My background is BS in engineering and a doctorate in counseling. And over the years, I've worked with a large number of people. And one of the major problems for people who are destitute is that invariably, they were abused as children. And as a result, they never had a chance to take the initiative and plan and do things for themselves. And that carries over, unfortunately, into adulthood. I'm proposing a bootstrap program for people who are disabled and receiving disability. They get about $900 a month, but it's nowhere near enough to provide housing and living expenses. And this proposal would bring them together into a group to purchase the property at 1968 Smith Flat Cemetery Road. It's a little over an acre, I believe it was a machine shop, I believe, at one time. In addition to being a residence, it needs a vast amount of rehabbing and, to make it really, it's not habitable as it is. I believe that a combination of what these people can do, if they're disabled, that doesn't mean they can't do anything, it simply means they're not able to go out and make a living doing something. And however, being able to work two, three hours a day, this kind of thing. Everybody in the program would be an owner of the property as an LLC, so that they take ownership of what, what they're working on and have a future there. In addition, one of the other requirements would be that they have to be productive. So to remain in the program, they can't simply come in, crash, and think they can live off of everybody else. A major aspect of it will be that we anticipate that they would pay $500 a month each, and that we would have 10 or more people there to give us a budget that would sustain as well as provide some funds for part of the rehabbing. But on, there are gonna be two issues that we're, the council may be in a position to help. All the extra funds you have laying around that you don't know what to do with, you could use to provide us a boost up to get it started.
If you could wrap up your comments, please. Sorry.
And the other is that there may be some issues with regard to the zoning that we'll need help with. If you know of a better program, let's do it. If not, I'll be back to find out how you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have to leap, leap fast here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Peg Vanderkar. I'm a resident of Placerville. Since someone else gave their background, I'll, I'll do a little bit of that also. I have a degree in public administration and worked for the state until I retired from there, and then I have a degree in, in counseling psychology and 20 years of that with family therapy. I am here to encourage the city to move forward to allow the use of the armory building as a single point of entry location, that's a technical term that we learned through working with the continuum of care, and transitional shelter with social and medical services available. I encourage the use of the $800,000 of state and federal funds, I believe are available through the Eldorado Opportunity Knox, that's the continuum of care name for the county, their work in the last recent years. We will lose the money if we do not use it soon. The current winter shelters are only that, I work hard on those. They are not a path forward to self-sufficiency, they are a safe place to sleep at night for some people. It's important, that safe place to sleep at night, but the community, this community needs more. As a person told me once, if I have to spend all day long figuring out where I'm gonna sleep safely that night, there's no way that I can apply for a job or go to a medical appointment or do anything else productive. The lack of transitional shelter deemed with housing, the lack of housing and lack of health and social ser, social services coming together at that shelter is costing the community, not, this community, not only lives, but also the productivity of valuable human beings in our economy. Many folks who are homeless do not want to be homeless. They do not see a way out. It's important that we figure out a way that there's not just a sleeping shelter, but something, there's a path out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've said before that if I make a mistake, I'll do what I expect anyone else to do, correct it. However, regarding the remarks I made the last time I were here about Placerville Drive, there's no corrections required. Every statement of fact I made was true, every word of it, the comments of the city's engineer notwithstanding. To make it real simple, I'm starting with number one, and this is a copy of the letter I've received two years ago. And this letter, just to make it real simple for you, you look at the last paragraph, and it says exactly what I said it says. The condition is that in order to get this site plan review, or what I call a grading permit, I have to agree that the city can take that property that they claim is their easement with just a 120-day written notice. Note, it doesn't say that it's required when they have a specific plan to implement, it doesn't mean that they're gonna, ready to go, it could be anytime they give you the written notice, you gotta surrender it. So as soon as I got that, I went to John Driscoll. Why? Because I went to him before, when this issue was raised a couple of years earlier, and he was helpful, since he was party to the initial negotiations, to give me documents that to, my architect and I gave us the green light, we could go forward. So when I'm told that the city is waiting for me to do things, that the engineer is looking for things for me to do, yes, there is a list, that's about 14 pages, six of which refer to this easement, and it includes things like paying $858 for an application fee. Now, am I gonna spend that money? We've already hired an engineer and a surveyor as a result of the first matter, but once we got that letter, we're not giving you anything else, because it'd be really silly to do that when we would be putting hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars into a project. So that's the issue. It's real simple, it's right in front of you, and that's exactly the way I described it, almost quoting it from memory, word for word. On the second matter, I mentioned the property on Placerville Drive. I'm not a mind reader, I have no idea what the motives and thoughts were. I'm assuming they were all innocent, and that there was nothing nefarious. All I can tell you is what's clearly in front of me. And what I saw that one night is that one property owner was singled out to get what looked like special consideration. They too had to come up with curbs and sidewalks, and I heard council members Borelli and Acuna very thoughtfully, with great passion, talk about that person's plight and how burdensome it was, and...
Kirk, could you wrap up your...
Sure.
...comments, please?
Bottom line, just to make it real simple, I've been promised, basically, we'll have a meeting, we'll have a meeting about as often as I've been told, the check's in the mail. If you and Cleve Morris are available to meet with me next week and come up with a simple solution, because it's been pending for five years, a little quicker than Broadway, and I think it ought to be speeded up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claire Van Damme, and I'm representative of the Western Slope Coalition on Affordable Housing and Homelessness, and I'm also a retired attorney, spent over 20 years with the county of Sacramento in the county council's office, assigned to the Department of Health and Human Service and Health and Human Assistance for many of those years. So I'm, I'm coming to you again about the ordinance, and I'm going to be blunt, and I think I'm kinda, I don't mean to sound adversarial, even though that's my background, I can't help myself sometimes, it's not my intention. But I feel that the, the city is walking on very, very thin ice at this point. I'm aware of eviction notices, and the notices that I saw to the homeless required them to vacate or lose their property. I'm being told, this is brand new, but I'm now being told that citations for trespass have gone out as well, which ultimately will result in some sort of criminal conviction, and that that happened as of today. Whether or not it's true, I don't think that the city can take property or push people out if they don't have somewhere to go. Right now, the only shelters, and I don't think they qualify as a shelter in the sense in the Martin versus Boise case, where you have an ongoing shelter that people can go to, have their things there and so forth. But it's only five more weeks of availability, it's only five nights a week, it's only two nights in the city of Placerville. And there are only about 40 beds available at any given time, and there are far more people in tents. So the city knows that there are not enough shelter beds available, even if you count that as a shelter, and even if they're only getting cited on the nights that the shelters are open. If people cannot avoid the crim, being criminalized because they have no place to sleep and they must sleep, then the city is going to be, I think, risking taxpayer dollars because it's going to be challenged. That would be my personal prediction, it's not a threat or anything like that, it's just to say I have serious concerns about what's going on. From a humanitarian standpoint, I have grave concerns as well. Basically, at this point, nobody knows where they can go within the city of Placerville. Some folks are being told to move, other people are not being told to move, that raises other questions. I would like to urge the city to first find a location for temporary shelter for the homeless, stop this implementation that's going on right now, hold it in abeyance, not prosecute anybody. If, if the thing about the citation is not true, I haven't been able to personally verify that, but I would urge you to hold back and move towards what we've been talking about here tonight, which is a hangtown haven sort of situation, but something that would address the problems that previously existed, and we would be delighted to work with you. And as Maureen has already told you, we would love to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jonathan Gainesborough, resident of Placerville, 30 years ongoing. I'm proud of Placerville, but right now, Placerville is in the news in Sacramento. National Public Radio has a series about the refusal of Placerville to provide shelter for the homeless. National Public Radio is going to spread that beyond Sacramento. I want to be proud of, of Placerville. But the anti-humanitarian stance of the anti-camping, anti-human, non, non-civilized language of the anti-camping ordinance is... anti-camping ordinance is incredible to me. I have absolute unbelief at the minuscule change. Three locations were identified by the city. One of them was Upper Broadway, which has been the main campsite for the homeless, the helpless, the hopeless, the lepers, the trash that the city apparently wants to sweep out of the county. They are not lepers. They are you. You could have a stroke, lose your job, lose your house, lose your car, lose your wife, lose your children, lose your sanity. But Jesus Christ said, "I was hungry, I was thirsty, and you gave me the drink," and you do that at Upper Room beautifully. You can be proud of yourselves in the Upper Room. But today, some of the homeless were cited. They did receive sites yesterday. We're told that they would be brought to jail today at the Upper Room. Jesus says in Matthew 25 continuing, he says, "I was a xenos," the word in the Greek. Xenophobia is the word phobos, which is the Greek word for fear, and xenos is the word for stranger. Jesus Christ says to you, "I was a stranger, and you took me in. I was homeless, and you gave me shelter. You gave me shelter," he says, that's how it's translated in the Greek. I see the time is running down. I was going to bring an alarm clock that stopped working for me, I cut the cord on it, it wouldn't ring. The alarm clock has rung on Placerville here. The lawyers in Boise never counted that their refusal to create more shelters would go to the U.S. Supreme Court, who upheld Martin Boise, which says it is a cruel and unusual punishment to criminalize the homeless and to even move them and make them move off of public property, which is what that is. I've talked to the county assessor...
Can you wrap up, please?
I will. Let's make America and California proud of Placerville and not be a test case to once again verify Martin Boise. God bless you all, you are wonderful people.
My name's Franz Wallhues, I'm currently homeless. When my daughters were young, they had a lemonade stand, and the boys up the street had already had a lemonade stand, and so they pushed them out of business. So I got to see little kids working their business techniques on each other, and a lot of it was just plain miscommunication. Well, we're up on Broadway, 25 of us were there, and now we have about 12 people left there, only because they don't know where to go. I think communication and telling us where we can go is the biggest thing, you know. We're trying to move forward, not do anything else. You know, I heard something early on where you said Caltrans is not concerned with the emotional concerns of the city. Well, the city's not concerned with the emotional concerns of the people, because I'm one of those people. So, communication works better. You know, I've, God bless you, law enforcement's wonderful, you know, but they don't know what to do either. We need to find a solution for this, and we're willing to do whatever you guys want us to do, we just don't know what to do, you know. I can, right now, the technicality is that in the morning I pack my stuff up and then move five feet over, and then in the evening put it back together. I mean, a lot of us are willing to do all this, we just need communication, because what I see is, I see City Hall acting a lot like the nine-year-old bullies that pushed my daughters out of their lemonade stand, you know, and I know you guys are better than that. But, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Jane McGinnis, good evening. Friday, Sacramento Bee, reported on city of Sacramento's intention to pass a camping ordinance based on infrastructure and safety. An attorney, Mark Maron, was quoted in the paper saying he's very likely to file a federal civil rights lawsuit as soon as they pass the ordinance. Doesn't have to wait for someone to be arrested, because if they pass the ordinance, they are in violation of Martin v. Boise. Our courts don't always speak as clearly as we would wish, and in court, each side wants to prevail. Once a dispute of any kind has been adjudicated, however, we benefit most from clarity, both sides. We just need to know exactly what we can do and what we can't do. How far can each side push the envelope? The Ninth Circuit decision clearly addressed several issues, they resolved some questions, but that little footnote on page 32 of the court's decision, about eight lines, was a little vague. So, follow this with me. Quote, "Nor do we suggest that a jurisdiction with insufficient shelter can never criminalize the act of sleeping outside." Dot, dot, dot. An ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at particular times at particular locations might well be constitutionally permissible. When a legal decision uses language like this, it's court speak. It's equal to saying, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. We didn't get that deeply into this particular point, but we'll look at it later if we have to. That happens so often in these large federal cases. A statement like this of maybe, maybe not fails to give clarity to everybody. The problem with that is these vague statements bring us more and more litigation, more lawsuits, until every little maybe has been hammered out, and everybody has clarity. It's inevitable, any city policy that hangs its hat on a maybe statement in a footnote may be the target of lawsuits in order for both sides to get clarity. Now, since notices were served on February 19th, I have been in touch with attorneys in Sacramento, including attorney Mark Maron, with promises to keep them updated on what the outcome is here. Monday, new citations were issued ordering camper's appearance in court on March 30th at 8:00, Superior Court. Here's the problem here. If somebody ends up being arrested, or just fined, or just found guilty of a misdemeanor, this would be an adverse action based on an ordinance that was deliberately crafted as an end run around the Ninth Circuit decision. It would be deliberately ignoring the spirit and intent of that decision, which is to provide rescue and shelter for the homeless. Now, today I spoke with the ACLU at length in San Francisco, they have opened a file, they've asked to be notified if anybody is arrested in Placerville or brought into court based on this ordinance. That is not a threat, I am begging you...
Could you wrap up your...
We are a sitting duck here. I suggest you designate the two or three areas that can be used for camping, day and night, with sanitary facilities, and start working to set them up. Hold off on any enforcement of this ordinance, let the city of Sacramento take the point on this. They're big, they've got the budget. Let them decide. Look at the risk, if they decide to go forward, then we can sit back and see where the lawsuit takes them.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
I will. We're not large enough to take this risk. If there's a bigger guy on the block that's willing to do it, let them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice man, left some stuff up here. Sometimes, my name's Ken Greenwood, spoke to you earlier, county resident, so I feel a little out of place, but I'm going to do it anyway. This is my example here of what's promised. It's all glittery, it's beautiful, it's all lit up, it's got a bow on top of it, and this is what we get. And I use this for just about any project these days, but I started out doing it with respect to wireless telecommunication facilities, or WTFs, okay? And, again, wireless telecommunication facilities, I'm not being a bad person here. Anyway, we call them cell towers or stealth monopines, because you'll never see them, right? Okay. Do you have a WTF ordinance to judge use permits when they come to you? I'm told not yet, or perhaps not a great one, and that it's being worked on. Well, that's good, because El Dorado County has been working on one for years, and it's terrible, and then they don't revise it with respect to setbacks and such like that. And they're running into some really big issues with people who end up being right next to it. That's not a good place to be. This guy gets $3,200 to $5,000 a month rent. They love these things. Anyway, and the feds tell us that RFR, radio frequency radiation, they're like Obi-Wan Kenobi, these are not the droids you're looking for. This won't hurt you. And so they're forcing and bullying, via the wireless industry, they're forcing and bullying local jurisdictions into approving stuff that is presented like this, but really looks like this. Anyway, and it's not, it's kind of a hidden thing, but it's really important when somebody next door to you wants to put one up. Then it's in your face, and I've called it the life sentence, because that sucker is not going away for the rest of your life, and good luck selling your house. Anyway, South Lake Tahoe, city of South Lake Tahoe, got hammered on this last month, I was at the hearing, three and a half hours, they were wringing their hands, and this and that and the other thing, and they were being bullied by the wireless industry, and they folded on a three to two sadly vote. Better get, and now they're working diligently to get an ordinance together for this. Remember, you can say no to the wireless industry. You just have to have a good ordinance that helps you do so, and you get it run by your county council or city council, et cetera, to make sure that it's going to stand up, because they have unlimited resources and they will sue the heck out of you, or at least they will make you think that way. But a lot of cities are fighting these people now, and it's working. And then, of course, there's 5G on every power pole. Be very afraid.
My name is James Smithy. This is my first time ever at a city council meeting. I just want to make a quick comment. I hate to beat a dead horse. I actually came here because I was worried about the homeless population. I live up over on Broadway. And I came here because I was worried that with the movement of the Upper Broadway Tent City, that they were moving into residential areas and whatnot, and I've had my eyes opened, because they're not a problem, they're not the problem. These people are here, like, begging to tell us what to do, what can we do to get ourselves out of the hole, and it falls on deaf ears. I mean, there's literally people here giving ideas, Mr., I think his name is Lloyd Ingles, the armory, I just, it's very disheartening. I've been a resident in Placerville for 30 years, which is most of my life, and it was an eye-opener today. These are your people. We need to help.
Hi, Jennifer Chapman, Clay Street. So I guess, first of all, really quickly, on traffic related to the park concept, there were some other responses to that. The first one had to do with this train from Folsom being a natural connection to the history and to managing people. And then I did talk about the city of Mill Valley and how they've had to deal with Muir Woods, and all of the management of millions of people coming to Muir Woods, this little 500-acre remnant of old-growth redwoods. And, of course, it's been a huge thing with neighborhoods and with that city, and they've managed to create a very effective parking shuttle, or, excuse me, parking reservation system and shuttle system, and it's managed. And, but in any case, I thought it was a really successful meeting. I think you're getting a very narrow view of it. It has been recorded by various people. But, you know, it's really very much, I guess that was lost, this idea of how initial conceptual, you know, high level it is right now as a concept, and it's really that phase of an idea where you're kind of scoping, spotting issues, assessing stakeholders, and yes, you know, figuring out who is interested in being partners, and I guess that was, you know, really the question, you know, sort of to the city. And in the end, with Rec and Parks Commission, it just became very clear that their jurisdiction or their piece of Placerville to advise on is very, you know, very, of course, limited to the parks themselves. And so we came away with, okay, it's Gold Bug Park, it's Hattie Mine slash Gold Bug Park is one of their parks, and then the El Dorado Trail, which I started to talk about, again, the connection to railroads and the Southern Pacific Railroad corridor and that history, which was a little bit of a disconnect for Jackie, it seemed, but when I asked her if Friends of El Dorado Trail would like to be part of the working group, that didn't sound like that was of interest. So, the other thing tonight, though, was, you know, I did come away with that meeting realizing that the historic district, which is such an important part of this park concept, is not at all in the realm of the Rec and Parks Commission, that's more in the Planning Commission arena. So, I just wanted today, you know, we've done, Friends of History of Kingtown did, has been doing a lot of work on the historic district, as it does relate to the Clay Street Bridge project, because that project does impact, it has significant impacts to the historic district. And so, you all had, before I was in town, in 2012, you had folks that came up with a concept of a historic district boundaries for downtown Placerville along Main Street, and this has been something that we've been trying to follow up on as a foundation that grew out of the, you know, city local residents, and so a lot of work has been done on it by a consultant named Judith Marvin. She identified all kinds of buildings that would contribute to this historic district. Just so you know, I've included her Department of Park and Rec forms. She, in the course of designating a district, you actually create forms for individual structures that either stand alone as significant or both are significant on their own, as well as contributing elements. And so back to city jurisdiction, the city owns the Bell Tower, which is on the list, it owns the Druid Monument, it owns the Mestern and Ketchup Building, it owns the Clay Street Bridge itself, and all of those are parts of this historic district.
Jennifer, if you could wrap up your comments?
Okay, and so, and then there's the Hangtown Creek retaining walls, which are being identified and described by Caltrans and their consultants. Anyway, it is exciting what we have here, and I hope that folks will be excited about it.
Thank you.
And I'm giving you a copy. And it was on Fox 40, which partners with Cron 4 in the Bay Area, so lots of people are getting a little bit of the idea, so we'll see how it catches on. Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, can you hear me?
I can, we can.
Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit tonight, for the council and the mayor and everybody, about fire safety. This is the driest February on record for 100 years. If there is ever a year to get homes and roads' fire safety clearance done, this is the one. Now is the season, before fire season starts. Placerville streets and roads need work to prevent a carelessly discarded cigarette from becoming a disaster. The city needs to put some crews out to clean and clear along city rights of ways, and those who live here and love it need to show that love. Has the city got a positive response from Lumston Park, or Lumston Ranch, or the large property adjacent Escaton, or any of our other adjacent large owners? property adjacent Escotan, or any of our other adjacent large owners? If not, we need to be getting that out as a priority. Paradise doesn't need a city government anymore, because they don't have a city anymore. I really don't want to follow that example. Also, where, oh, where is the vegetation ordinance on the city website? I can't find it. No one should have to dig for it. At this time of year, it should be right up there in the headlines. Come on, Placerville. We work together on other things. Let's work together to make our wonderful historic community fire-resistant. It's a big job. But if we work together and we help each other, we can do it.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Clarici, resident. I went to the Parks and Rec meeting as well, and I was actually just going to come here to give props to Jackie and the commissioners. I thought they did a great job, ran a good meeting, they were respectful, asked the right questions, provided solid guidance on what they need to do next. Noted there was very little substance in the slideshow, needed more meat. I would strongly urge you to take, make these folks, go find some meat, make it into something, and then bring it back to that group first. They did a really good job, just briefly, on the railroad. The idea that you're ever going to recreate the railroad back into town is never going to happen. There's already a trail on there. There will be a battle of tears and blood if you start pulling up that trail to put those railroad tracks back in. In fact, if anything, the railroad is moving, the trail is moving in the opposite direction. It is actually going further to the west. So this idea that you can mitigate traffic with a railroad is a little loopy. Okay. This whole, I said it the other night, this proposal is built on a false premise. We don't take good care of our historic assets. They cannot point to a single action that has resulted in losing an asset. There are all these things at risk, but they're not really at risk at all. There's no risk to any of the assets they showed, and they showed the usual suspects. None of what they are suggesting needs a historic overlay or a national park. The property owners and residents have shown that they can be good stewards of the history of this town. They just don't want to believe it. There is no historic district, as often as you said, and Jennifer has accepted this, but she keeps coming back with it. And you know why? Because every time someone has tried to make an historic district overlay on top of the business owners, or the property owners on Main Street, they get flogged. This is about Clay Street and the bridge. We all know that. The people Miss Chapman and the friends and protectors of this and that are the same people who have either litigated the city, or are currently litigating the city. Let's have a show of hands. There's at least one gentleman behind me who sued either the city or the state of California about something going on on Main Street. And the friends of this and the protectors of that have done the same thing. There are also many of the same people who are endlessly making requests of city staff and wasting their time on fishing expeditions when it comes to public records request. And yet, we're all supposed to forget that and jump into bed with these people with the, this idea that all of a sudden, we're going to hold hands and sing kumbaya, and make a national park. Don't waste your staff's time. Don't waste your time. If this is a real thing, make them go make it a real thing. This effort is going to cost somewhere between one-hundred-and-fifty and five-hundred thousand dollars, and that's the parks' services estimate of what it costs. Probably because they'll have to do an environmental document, which will be interesting, because they kind of like to do that, or at least they like to make other people do it. Don't give them, finally, don't give them a club to come back here and beat you over the head with when it comes to Clay Street and that bridge, because that's what this is about. They want to give all of this stuff an air of legitimacy, so that they can come back when they're doing this and saying, well, no, we have all these forums, and there's a district, and we're all working together. I'm sorry, I'm running a little long. Thank you very much for your time. It's been a joy.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm, I have a very simple request. I'm Deidra Morbel-Fyor, and I own a home up on Granview. I had a clerical issue that happened when I applied for the Drive Clean program. So I have three kids at three different schools in town, and I've owned the home for twenty years. And I applied for an electric car rebate based on my home ownership status and driving from Citrus Heights to Placerville, to Citrus Heights to Placerville. But I didn't think that there would be a problem with the clerical status of my homeownership. So I'm on the mortgage and the utilities and so forth, but when I applied for my thousand-dollar rebate, there was a clerical problem. So I'm just bringing that to your attention and hoping that you can overlook that. We had to move our family out of the home and start renovating because of a water leak over summer. And after taking kids to three different schools, from Citrus Heights and living in one of our other homes while we're renovating, which is a very extensive water damage claim, we applied for all the rebates and went and bought the car in December, and then we were denied our rebate. So that's why I'm here, and it seems frivolous after all these other topics, but I would love to be able to get that for our family. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Did have a couple of things. Before I do that, just council members, anyone want to say anything before I add a couple of clarifying questions?
I have one comment with regard to the homeless, and it's not that we, personally, we have any disregard for the homeless. One of the challenges is, is that the county, when you talk about Health and Human Services, that is a county program. The city does not have a Health and Human Services program. We do not have funding for Health and Human Services. All the federal money and all the state money goes to the county, and that is being operated under Opportunity Knox and Continuum of Care. I firmly believe that all of you want to succeed in helping the homeless, and it's not just a fight you want to have with the city, because we enjoy fighting. It's to help the homeless. And we, along with our police officers and our participation with the HOT team, are doing everything that I feel we can do to help the homeless within this, within our financial capabilities. The Armory is a county issue, and, and I firmly believe that these issues need to be, need to be settled at the county level, because that is where the money is. That is where the staffing is. They have, they have a full Health and Human Services program up there. We have, we have no Health and Human Services in the city. We don't have a budget for it. We cannot do it. And I, I'm with you, and I will go and fight with the county with you. I think the Opportunity Knox needs to hear your words in their, in their meetings, and the Continuum of Care needs to hear your words in their meetings. I'd be happy to convey your words to them and support you in that effort, and support the city in the effort of, of working with the county. Unfortunately, the city has not the funding, nor the resources, or the staffing that we, that the county is overwhelmingly responsible for.
No other public comments, please. Thank you. We had a couple of cler, thank Vice Mayor, any other? We had a couple of, I think, items I wanted to get clarification on. First one being, anything, and I think this might be for Pierre, but anything new from HCD on the Armory? I know we've gotten sort of conflicting, at least there's been conflicting public comments out of the governor's office, but do we have anything specific from the administration?
Staff's more recent discussion with the staff at State Housing and Community Development was basically in regards to an issue that was brought to my attention, that there is the possibility of some deed issue, that when, in the 1940s, I think it was stated to me, that when the property was given from the fairgrounds to the state to be used as an armory, that should that armory then cease to function as an armory, that the land would revert back to the fairgrounds. So, we have contacted HCD, and their staff is working with the State Department of General Services to determine if that is indeed the case. So, I'm assuming, then, that state staff is researching the deeds or the title and that sort of thing, and they're going to get back to us when they come to some determination. But aside from that more recent situation, staff is currently working with HCD on developing that site as an affordable housing site. And we're moving, currently moving forward with that.
And has there been any notices, emails, letters to us, to the city of Placerville, in regards to using that location, the ability for a local jurisdiction to use that as a homeless shelter?
No emails, just verbal discussions, and the verbal discussions have focused on the desire to create an affordable housing project on that site.
Okay. Thank you. There was another question on enforcement of the, of the new ordinance. I don't know if there's any update on that in terms of ticketing, or if that has even anything to do with the ordinance. I don't know. City manager citations, yeah?
Yeah, let me just respond quickly, that we do need to do some work there. There perhaps have been some things that have happened, and the chief can maybe respond to that, but we need to step back and make sure we're doing that right, and so we will take care of that this, this week.
Chief, any other comments?
I'll leave the legal questions to the city attorney, but I can answer the enforcement part. There were some citations issued earlier this week, but not before there were several days of interventions and visits by the HOT team, as well as members of the Department of Health and Human Services, in an attempt to find the assistance and the help for these folks prior to citations being issued. There was no property seized or booked, and nobody was arrested. So, the interventions occur only after a lot of intervention, the interventions or the citations occur only after intervention from the HOT team. And by HOT team, I mean not just police and law enforcement, I mean all of those listed agencies, it was alluded to by Councilmember Thomas, that we have partnered with to get these folks the assistance. That has been an ongoing effort, as I have detailed for the council on many occasions. And in my crime report, you're going to see a little bit of a, some statistics on calls related to homelessness. And I think the next council meeting, I'm going to bring back all of the HOT data that the sheriff department provided to me, but they didn't provide it to me in time for this meeting. So, and I'll let the city attorney respond to any questions regarding the Boise case.
Thank you, chief. City attorney, if you have any comments on?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you were done.
Just had one last item, and that was actually to the lady up here in front, in terms of her rebate. I think that's a county issue in terms of, I don't know if you submitted something to the city, but we're, I think we're happy to get staff to look at something, but I always thought that was a county program.
Yeah, I actually asked Dave Warren to connect with her and find out the real issue and see if we can help, help her with it, so.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try and be brief. And I want to take the opportunity to tag on to the compassionate offer that Vice Mayor Thomas just shared with everybody, and his, I think, very heartfelt concern for trying to make sure that the regional efforts to help the homeless go in the correct direction. And I appreciate his offers, and I, and I know that he will work with anybody that comes forward. Earlier this evening, it might have been Mr. Vandecar that asked us, what has the city done for the homeless? Well, as Vice Mayor outlined, we don't have health programs. We do not have any of that. That's all done at the county. The state does not allow a city of our size to get involved in those sorts of things. So we sit almost out in your seats. We don't have the funding. We don't have the departments. We never have. I welcome you to look at past budgets and, and city structure makeup, to find where the city has ever provided it. We are a very small city. We are not a Sacramento. And what the city has done, and the chief just touched on it very nicely, is, and it is one of the duties of the city, to provide a police department, and I think they do an excellent job. We have officers that have gone above and beyond to be trained, to be involved with the HOT team, to be involved in intervention, and to take the extra steps, whether or not you care to believe that those steps do, I happen to think they do. That is a service that we are providing for the homeless. We are keeping them as safe as we can, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I hope I'm not seeing smirks out there in the audience. I don't think anyone was disrespectful when we sat here for thirty minutes and listened to comments. We also provide, as part of our city charter, a fire and ambulance service that is state-of-the-art and always has been. It responds whenever necessary. It doesn't say, whoa, are we going to get paid for this emergency call for our ambulance? Our multimillion-dollar equipment? No, they respond whenever requested, whether that be a citizen, a homeless person, or a police officer calling for those, those services. And something else the city has also done, and I think it's huge, the city has very wisely, through a number of years, managed to encourage Marshall Hospital to remain and expand in this community. They also operate a last-ditch stop for folks who don't have any other place to go, and it costs a tremendous amount of money every year to their operation, but yet, to compliment them and to say that we were good partners, and they had the faith to go ahead and not reduce, but to expand their footprint in this city. And they very much are a part of, sadly, the very end days for some folks who have no other place to go. So yes, those are services that the city should be and is providing under the things that are typical of a town of 10,000 folks. I welcome any of you to come and find the money to help us build the facilities that we would all like to see, but sadly, it just simply does not happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I thank you, Vice Mayor, for your compassionate statement earlier this evening.
Councilmember Borelli.
Kind of along those lines, Mark, I'm not sure. I keep hearing it, and I brought this up, I don't know how many times. I think a lot of folks want us to see Hangtown Haven started again. They, we, we did have a very, very successful program, but we had to, that was only a temporary, it was a one-year agreement, and I have asked our city manager a couple of times to explain why we can't do that again, because I don't think the people understand why we can't start another Hangtown Haven. So, could you very, could you tell us one more time why we cannot do it?
Three minutes. Well, if, if, if we had the right facility, I suppose we could do that.
And what, why can't we go back to where we were, and why did we have to close it down?
Again, the reason we closed it down, the location, is because we did not feel it was a good, good location because of the, there's no sidewalk or anything to get up
We didn't meet ADA.
Yeah, there was, there were restrictions on people getting up there. It wasn't, we did not feel it was safe when we did it, and those were the reasons. And we said that from the day one when we started it, that we wanted to try it as a pilot program. And you're right, it was successful. But to start it up at that location again, now, you can argue, and I will point out, that we are, we have a project, our engineering department right now, to add sidewalks and bike lanes, not sidewalks, but bike and walking path to Broadway, all the way up to, I believe, to Point View Drive, correct, Rebecca? So, that is happening. That project's starting construction now, actually. But, so-
Whose property was that?
That property was owned by, well, thank you.
It was private, it was private property, but we had permission, correct?
He gave the nonprofits and the volunteers the right to use it, and we allowed them to do it there, yeah, so.
So therein lies the question. We did it once, can we do it again? If we can't, why? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Technically, we could do it again. I, I think that if we are going to do something like that, we need to have some commitment and some cooperation-
Oh, absolutely.
-from the county on, on how that might work, and how they, what they might be willing to put into it.
And I think we learned a lot of good lessons, too, that, so there would be a different approach, so. Thank you.
And that was, and that was done with nonprofit money. And I think there's a, there's some suggestion there was mixed success, because it ended up being a permanent residence for some as opposed to a transitional opportunity. And, and some, some were wally successful and some weren't, but that, I think that goes with the territory, too, so.
This is probably going beyond what we're discussing.
I was just adding, probably going-
We keep getting reference to that, you know?
Right.
And I just thought, okay, we, we've got to talk about this, and why, and answer that question, so.
Well, and what I'm, as I've been sitting here, and we listen to everybody, I don't disagree with anyone up here, I was thinking, maybe, you know, we haven't had a community chat for a while. I'm, I'm more than happy to, I would throw out under future items to do a community chat on this issue, and let's roll out the budget, and, you know, show where we can look- I think we're an open book, and would be more than happy to have that conversation with anybody about, you know, where and how we can do something in terms of, and also how we fund something. So, we can talk about that later, because I know we're getting too far afield here, but just wanted to put that out there. So, I'm going to go ahead now and move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call unless vote, unless one member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion.
I move the, we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for a roll call vote.
Mayor Sargosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any items pulled, no ordinance tonight, so moving on to item 11, public hearings. Item 11.1, consider the notice of appeal filed by Jennifer Chapman regarding the decision of the Planning Commission approving Site Plan Review 19-05 to allow the demolition of a single-family residence and attached garage located at 3095 Cedar Ravine Road, based on the findings made by the Planning Commission, and Mr. Rivas has his report.
Thank you, members of the council. Just to give a very, very brief history in regards to 3095 Main Street, which is right at the corner of Main Street and Victor Lane. For several years, in the, you know, in the very recent past, the city had been working with a former owner of that piece of property that used it as a rental unit. The house fell into disrepair. Staff considered the house to be a health threat to public health and safety. The building was red-tagged as not habitable. Despite that, the property owner continued to put tenants into that building to where the city had to take more evasive action to make corrections to the building. The owner was not very cooperative. The city ended up going to the Superior Court, requesting that the property be put into a receivership. That was successful. The court then did appoint a receiver for the property, which then essentially takes it from the property owner, and the receiver has the ability to either fix the building or sell the building to get it into conformity with city codes. And basically, the property was purchased by Mr. Michael McDermott, and he is, he became the applicant that came forward then to demo the building. The building is rather old, I guess records show that the house was probably constructed at about 1899. The demolition of any building within a historic district, this is located in one of our four residential historic districts, requires that the demolition would be approved by the Planning Commission. So, it went before the Planning Commission. On January the 7th, the Planning Commission did approve the demo of that building, so the applicant would have just merely had to come in then to the building division and seek a demolition permit to have the building removed. So, there's a 10-day appeal period to that decision by the Planning Commission, and then the appellant, Mr. Jennifer Chapman, did file a timely notice of appeal on January 16th, and then we set the hearing for today, February 25th. Prior to that, on February 14th, staff did receive an email from the applicant, which is attached to your staff report, the applicant then stating that he is withdrawing his Site Plan Review application, and that he indicated his desire to consider and reevaluate other options for use of the property. Staff has met with him on several occasions. He is looking at rehabbing the building and possibly doing some additional residential development on the property as it is zoned for multifamily. So, with that, I just want to inform the council that staff now considers the appeal to be moot, and no longer standing. So, staff is requesting that the council take a number of actions. One, that you received a letter dated February 14th, 2020, from Michael McDermott withdrawing the Site Plan Review application, SPR 1905, where he was requesting approval to demolish a single-family residential structure located at 3095 Cedar Ravine. And then, two, he asked that the council vacate the Planning Commission's January 7th approval of the Site Plan Review 19-05, which authorized the demolition of said residential structure. And then our third action, staff is requesting that the council direct staff to refund the appellant, Jennifer Chapman, the $400 appeal fee. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Council, any questions for staff at this point? Okay.
The applicant will be refunded their appeal? The money that...
We are requesting that the council direct staff to refund the $400 appeal to Ms. Chapman.
All right.
Is that standard?
Staff believes that that would be appropriate to refund her the money, since the appeal was mooted out. The Site Plan Review that she appealed was, now is mooted out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, public comment.
Just to let you know, the staff's position is a brief. It makes an argument that mootness applies. It doesn't, and I submitted an opposition for us that describes why. There is, for example, the case of Roe v. Wade, and in that case, the Supreme Court was asked to dismiss it for mootness. Wade pointed out, after all, pregnancy is no longer an issue. The court rejected it because it could come up again and again. Then, there was the last term of the Supreme Court, where there was a case in New York regarding gun safety, and it was contested that it was onerous, and that was challenged in court. Before it ever got to the Supreme Court, the state of New York withdrew it, took it out, took it off the books. And so, the argument was it's moot. So, no, it wasn't, because it could come back again, was the argument. In this instance, the reasons that are equitable for you to go forward and dismiss on the merits is because it was deceitful. I have two documents that you've been given before that form the basis for the applicant's position. One was an affidavit that purports, a report that purports to be the product of the Eldorado County Historical Museum. It's a fraud, it's forgery. They didn't do it.
No, I'll just say, into the mic, we can hear you better.
So, that's beyond dispute. At the time, I raised that, as did Ms. Chapman. We, by the way, didn't know each other would show up there in advance, but we both raised it, and yet neither the staff nor Mr. McDermott fessed up. Secondly, the next thing he says is, the building cannot be restored. Now, we know that's not true, because any building can be restored, the issue is at what cost? In this instance, the, they were not told that the Rossi's, Mr. and Mrs. Rossi, who had done the honorable thing, who had complied with the strict rules they were imposed on them, which is, they came up with a plan for restoring the building, and it would be just like it was originally. They, Mr. Rossi is a contractor, just recently retired, but 35 years in the business. So, unlike Mr. McDermott, he submitted a detailed accounting for what it would cost to do each specific thing. But they were knocked out because the rules were changed for McDermott. He was told that he could get a demolition permit. He was told that he could put two duplexes on a property, which instantly changes the value 400 percent. Now, as far as the research in the building, Ms. Chapman relied unfortunately on the staff report, which is not reliable. I did do research, and it's before you. It wasn't the last time. Two photographs, one was called the Kembelik House. Mary Corey made it for me. It necessarily crops off the embedded words, "The Kembelik House." That's in the original print. It is set back from the sidewalk. This house at 3095 is set back 75 feet from the street. It is the only house in that block that is. I ask you to look at the old photograph and see that there are three trees, three trees. Well, guess what? The second photograph I took this afternoon shows three stumps for those trees. Now, how can you, one night, give out a plaque and tell the Kembelik family you honor what their contribution is to the city, and then say, but it's not historically valuable? That would be inconsistent, and why, if you avoid the merits, he's going to come back and do it again, and he's going to be rewarded for being deceitful. Now, I sense that you want us to sum up something.
Yes.
I'm starting to get good at that, so you tell me what more you need to do, because I've listed for convenience at the very end, the things that we think should be done to ensure that this travesty doesn't happen. By the way, I want to correct a mistake I made. I said it made no sense the last time, that someone who appeals has to swear that their statements are true, and the applicant for a demolition permit doesn't. I was wrong. Andrew Painter pointed out that this man swore in her oath that the statements were truthful. They weren't. And when he says that he spoke to 10 different contractors, he didn't give the names of the specific person. I will bet you 100 bucks to your favorite charity, those folks didn't say what he says they said. So, you don't want to honor, it would be inequitable to honor that. There'd be no sanctions, because he can come back under what the staff recommends and make the same arguments again, only this time do a better job. It's like he forges...
Kurt, could you...
Forgives a check once, and then you give him a chance to do a better job of forgery. Any questions?
No.
So, we're focusing right now on the appeal related to approving a demolition permit, but there was actually a second part of the appeal, and there was a second action of the commission that night, which was to determine that the project was categorically exempt from further environmental review under SEQA, you know, involving the demolition. But basically, so that, I mean, you do need to be aware that that was part of the appeal, and that was part of the problem, was that, you know, staff recommended that the commission basically apply a categorical exemption to, you know, to that project, which just meant that it did basically stop the process of taking a hard look at the question of historic significance and historic resource. And then you should also be aware that your planning commission, you have the city code that deals with these historic buildings, Section 10410, it, what it's saying is that a historic building removal should only be done, I'm quoting from your code, should only be done if the building is in such a state of disrepair or dilapidation as to be untenable by reason of any cause, that it cannot, with reasonable diligence, be repaired and restored. Yet, we're going to hear from Mr. Rossi tonight, who diligently went through that building and assessed every single thing that needed to be done to repair and restore it, so you're going to hear about that. Anyway, I just think it's important to realize the demolition permit is key, but there was other parts to this as well. And I guess I just also want to say, bring you back to Clay Street, is, that big beautiful Victorian at the bottom of Clay Street was a Blair house. This building, what we got from the staff report was that it was Turney Blair, it was a daughter of a Blair, Janet Turney, and her, you know, daughter, or what have you, but in any case, and then, you know, the Kembelik Blair house, of course, we know the famous, you know, it's on the National Register of Historic Places, it's in the Thomas Kinkade painting, it's well-known throughout the world. The Kembelik Blair house, this house is Blair Kembelik, whatever it is, but it's also connected to a house down at the bottom of Clay Street, which is a Blair house. And this is all about the history of lumber and, you know, all this growth and change, again, in the period of significance that we keep talking about, which is the discovery of gold until the end of nonessential gold mining, 1848 to 1942.
The house next to it...
Nope. That's it, Kurt.
My name is Gail Rossi. I am a recently retired contractor. I have been in construction industry for over 40 years, 35 as a licensed B contractor. My wife and I have a beautiful home in five acres in Shingle Springs, enjoying our horses and animals. Her name is Pam. She could not be here tonight, for she works at Marshall Hospital in the evenings. For years, Pam would drive by this neglected home, going to and from work. She fell in love with it and told me whenever this home came for sale, she wanted us to buy it and bring it back to life. On April 5th, 2019, Coldwell Banker requested bids to remediate the home. The property was being sold under the court-appointed receivership. To determine remediation costs and mandated by Coldwell Banker, the buyers were told to go to the city of Plasterville Building Department and obtain a copy of the notice of order, Code Enforcement File 15031. The document included Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Exhibit B was a six-page document detailing existing conditions required for repairs, along with the safety code violations. It notes that the dilapidated garage, the dry rot, the mold, the inadequate electrical, plumbing, weather protection, and sources of heat, interior and exterior disrepair, exterior trash to be removed, structural violations, and building footings that were not per code. This report details the violations observed on the property, so that all interested parties, okay, that would be aware of these conditions before they, you know, they made their offer, okay? It was also noted as a requirement that the buyers to remediate all health and safety violations within six months, okay? More importantly, upon close of escrow, receiver will be discharged, but subject to reactivation if buyer does not complete its remediation obligations. The buyer, Mr. McDermott, did not complete his remediation obligations. So, why was the receiver not, you know, reactivated? You know, I created, like mentioned before, I recreated a detailed estimate for all the costs to remediate. Each line item of the cost, I tied into the violation and safety issues observed with Exhibit B. My estimate, with your help, my estimated provide that the home could be restored. My wife and I were prepared to invest $411,500 to bring this home back. The total estimated cost to remediate was $338,500. We presented an offer to Coldwell Banker for the difference of $73,000. Many contractors visited the site, but because of the difficult conditions chose not to bid. Our offer was the only one received by the April 5th deadline. If Coldwell Banker had accepted our offer and presented it to the court, the home remediation would have been completed today. We played by the rules and do not understand how Mr. McDermott was able to make an offer after the Friday deadline, and then not complete any of the work to restore the building. Folks are heart. The receivership should have been reactivated, and why not? Why isn't he appalled that this requested demo, the home? Pam and I would and are ready and able to bring this home back to life if allowed. It's a sore, horrible thing that this happened. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Okay, I'm going to close those. Mr. Driscoll? I guess it's my turn. Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, let me make a comment. The action that staff is requesting tonight in terms of dismissing the appeal and vacating the actions of the Planning Commission is not, is not a finding on the merits. It is, but what would be in the legal world, if you were in court, it would be a dismissal without prejudice, meaning that the action can be refiled again by either party, quite frankly, and that's what staff is requesting. If you look at the appeal, the appeal is appealing the issuance of the Site Plan Review approval allowing the demolition permit. That demolition permit has been withdrawn by the applicant and by, he's also withdrawn his Site Plan approval. He has nothing now. He cannot demo the building, he cannot do anything to the building without going into planning and starting this process all over again. There's nothing before you. There's nothing before you, and that's why I'm supporting staff's recommendation. There's nothing before you at all. You're not a court of law, you're not trying to deal with an issue such as abortion rights or those sorts of things. You're being asked to make a finding as to the historical significance of this property, really without sufficient evidence from either side, and that issue is no longer before you. So, I think the appropriate thing to do is to dismiss the appeal, vacate the planning commission's decision, and when you do that, you will also be vacating the second issue on appeal, which is the finding of the categorical exemption by the planning commission. Couple of other things I think we need to address is that the city was not a part of the sale process. What happened in that sale process, we had nothing to do with.
Can you repeat that again?
The city was not a part of the sale process. What happened in that process, the city had nothing to do with. It was out of our hands. When the complaint was filed to have the property declared a nuisance and, in essence, a public health and safety hazard, the court agreed with that, made that determination that it was a danger to health and safety, and ordered the appraiser to take control, or the receiver, rather, to take control of the property. Everything at that point is between the court and the receiver to deal with that property. The receiver has to make reports to the court as to what he's doing, what's going on, et cetera. When he made the sale, he made the report to the court as to what happened. That issue, if there's an issue there, needs to be taken up with the court and the receiver, not this council. The Rossi's, my understanding from the receiver, bid $73,000 and some change. The McDermott bid like $130-some thousand. The receiver's obligation was to get the highest and most amount of money he could get for that property, because there was city costs that he had to be repaid, his own fees had to be repaid, he needed to get that money out, and then any money that would be left over, if there were any, would go back to the original owner, who he took control from. Now, the receiver has been, they use the term reactivated, he's been active this whole time. He has been putting pressure on McDermott to do something with the property, either demolish it or rebuild it, whatever you're supposed to do. Apparently, he's convinced Rossi, McDermott, rather, to try and rebuild it, because I understand there's those talks going on. But I've also seen emails from the receiver to McDermott that tell me, tells me that he wants it done, and he wants it done right away. If not, the receiver has the ability, because it's still under court jurisdiction, to go back to court and get an order to resell the property. It doesn't mean that McDermott's going to keep it. The receiver has the ability to put that property back on the market, so if McDermott doesn't perform, the receiver will be going back to court, get a court order to sell the property, and if the Rossi's are still interested, they get a chance to purchase it at that time. But right now, coming to the thing that's before you, by withdrawing his site plan approval and his demolition permit, he's really made this, as staff has used the term moot, there's no issue before you to decide.
Kurt, no. Kurt, no. Kurt, no.
So, that's kind of a, this surprises me about the receiver still being, you know, in charge. So, and I can see, I guess that would be to protect people from coming in and buying up things and disholding them, or-
Yeah, it's for a number of reasons. One, the property is danger to the public right now, and he wants to see something, because the court made the order-
Mandated.
-that it was, and he needs to make sure that it doesn't remain that way for an indefinite period of time. So, he has to see something happen to that property.
I see.
And if McDermott's not going to do it, he's going to find somebody that will.
I see. That's interesting to line that. Thank you.
Other questions?
Question for Mr. Driscoll. Recently, I saw a for-sale sign go up on the property, and then about four or five days later, it disappeared again. Can you explain what that was all about?
Apparently, McDermott decided he thought he was going to sell the property. The receiver told him to take that sign down and take it down immediately.
And is it easy for somebody to find out who the receiver is on that property?
Yeah, it's court record.
Okay. Because we've heard the concerns this evening that the Rossi's were, they had their, you know, they were out, underbid, or thrown out, or there were some deceitful actions taken on behalf of the realtor or the receiver. Who would they file a complaint with?
I suppose they'd lodge their complaint with the court, because receiver operates under the auspices of the court.
Okay. I think that's important for everybody to realize, that the city has no control over that, that it's pointed through the court, and so if you felt like anything was done wrong, that would be the course to pursue. Okay, thank you.
Well, I, okay, I took it from Mr. Rossi's letter, or Mrs. Rossi, that they were, they were upset with Coldwell Banker, that that's where they feel as though things were not done right.
Was that appointed, would they have been appointed by the court, John?
No, I, the receiver would have the authority to select a realtor to market the property.
Who is the receiver?
Mark Adams.
And he is located-
I think he's in Southern California.
Seattle, Ohio.
Yeah, he's in Southern California. Although, he does a number of receiverships in Northern California. In fact, he's just been appointed by Sacramento Superior Court to be a receiver over a property owned by the same individual who owned this piece of property.
Wow, interesting.
Right. It's like his business is being a court-appointed receiver.
I'm sure that has a set of unique headaches.
Okay. Where do we want to go from here, counsel?
Is there any other, no, he closed the public comment.
Mm-hmm. Public comments closed.
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation that outlined this evening.
I'll second that.
And I just want to make sure, Councilmember Acuna, that includes vacating the actions by the planning commission?
Absolutely.
The approvals-
Yes.
-and the finding on the categorical exemption.
It absolutely does include that, Mr. Driscoll. Thank you. And I have been involved in this before, and I understand the importance of making that clarification, that we will vacate the actions of the planning commission.
And then, just to be clear, should anybody want to demolish this property in the future, it would need to go back through the planning commission and the entire process all over again?
That's correct, and I would not be surprised to see that there be some sort of a study required as to the historical significance of the property, should somebody want to do that.
Okay.
I would recommend it.
Okay.
I still second it.
Okay. Can I make a comment or two?
Sure.
Thank you. Several things. Having been involved in this process for a long time and worked with Mr. Ross in a variety of functions, the historic neighborhoods, for example, I wish the same enthusiasm that went into this appeal would be shown to maybe thinking about raising some funds and posting some signs along the streets that identify the Bedford Street Historic District, the Cedar Ravine Historic Residential Districts. They've existed for years. A lot of homeowners have been good stewards, but a lot of homeowners don't even know that they're out there. There was a lot of energies for this poor little rundown house, but wouldn't it be neat to see that maybe be an outcome? Jennifer, you did a GoFundMe site for, you know, to raise funds for the appeal costs. Perhaps you could put that money into some street signs. That would be a nice thing to further our history. The really sad thing is, is, you know, where were the Jennifer Chapmans and the Kirk Smiths when this entire neighborhood was under attack by real estate, the real estate investors? I have gone up and down Cedar Ravine Street on a daily basis for over 35 years, and since the 2000s, I have watched that entire neighborhood be ruined as it was turned into rental homes. House by house, yard by yard, has slowly turned into, sadly, the typical rental house. Cars parked on what was the lawn, people doing things in the creek, just no general upkeep, and rose gardens. There used to be some beautiful rose gardens along Cedar Ravine Creek, all gone, all from the real estate rush of the 2005s, and all from the real estate rush when the economy recovered. This very house has sat for years with a very, what'd I say, questionable property owner, totally into nothing but profits and absolutely no upkeep. You know, the case has maybe been made that we, this has been tied to a whole number of really significant historical features in town. Jennifer, I mean, I'm surprised you didn't have buildings overrun, down by the county office, that are rolled, tied into it. You had almost every other note, the Druid Monument, it's near the old post office, and it's near this, and it's near that, and it's near Clay Street Bridge. But, you know, sadly, this house has gone downhill through just years of neglect, and the current owner that it went to the receivership from had a family living in it. They were using a wood stove that didn't have a door on it, as I understood it at one point, trying to keep the house warm and not burn it down. They had small children in the house. That was when the city finally was able to step in and say, "Enough is enough." You know, what can we do to better protect our history? We have to realize that history didn't start just 100 years ago. It started 10 and 20 years ago, and that's when this house's blight really, in my mind, that entire neighborhood has suffered. So, I hope that we can see the same level of enthusiasm to bring this neighborhood back and not just focus on this one house as a convenient torch.
Okay, we have a first, any other comments? We have a first and second. Roll call vote.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take a quick seven-minute break. Seven, not 10, but not 5, 7. Thank you.
You set the alarm.
Going to call the meeting back to order. Item 12.1, Presentation to the City Council on an Informational Report Regarding the 2019 Crime Statistics from the Police Department Covering the Period Beginning January 1st, 2019 Through December 31st, 2019. Chief Ortega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is just the annual report of our crime data that's gathered through our various reporting systems. So, I'm going to try to go through this and then answer questions at the end, if that works for all of you. This is just our organizational chart, and without going into too much detail, I just want to note that there are several vacancies in our police department right now, one of which is we're missing one of our part-time CSO officers. I only have three dispatchers on staff right now, and I have an annuient filling in as my lead dispatcher. So, that's where those vacancies are.
How many dispatchers do we usually have? I thought we only had three.
We have authorized four-
Oh, okay.
-dispatch records technicians and one senior, or one lead, and then one position is frozen.
Oh, okay.
So, on this page here, you can just see the Part 1 crimes, and the Part 1 crimes, and this is going to be the last year, no, we'll have one more year after this one where we use the term Part 1. The federal government has changed that on us, and you'll hear more about that at budget requests and whatnot. But the typical Part 1 crimes are the homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assaults, arson, larceny, and auto theft. So, as you can see, we've had drops in some categories. We'll start with the Part 1 crimes against persons. The one that's gone up, that is noted for myself as aggravated assault, which is any assault that causes a serious bodily injury, and I'm going to drill down into that in a little bit. And then, down in the property crimes, burglary and auto theft, as you'll notice, have dramatically increased. I'm going to go to that here in just a second. So, this page shows the increase in aggravated assaults from last year, or 2018 versus 2019. Contained in there are a variety of issues that'll get on the next page, and then the property crimes, the Part 1s. As you can see, auto theft has increased, larceny did go down, so larceny is just simple theft, but burglaries did go up in a little bit, and I'm going to get to that in another page here. So, this just shows a five-year history of where we've been and where we are today. Just so you have some things in your memory, looks like 2016 was a rough year for robberies, but we continue to drop those numbers down. And again, I'm going to talk about burglaries. I'm going to break that down for you here in a minute, in between burglary, commercial and residential. In fact, I can do that right now. I got some clarification from Shirley Patty, who's our crime analyst. I want to start with the stolen vehicle issue. So, she was able to break down all the little boxes that our officers check on our crime reports. Of the stolen vehicles in this past year, 31% of them had their keys in the vehicle. Okay? So, that right there is, and I don't know what other way to put on that, but don't put your key, don't leave your keys to your car and your vehicle, okay? The next part is 39% of the ones that were stolen were unlocked, so lock your car. And then, 16% of them were reported stolen after they lent them to an acquaintance. So, I don't want to say, you know, I'm not going to put the blame on anybody, but there are some good crime prevention measures that we could take here. In the burglary, so, let's see here. So, for, in commercial, 4% of them, there was no forced entry, meaning the doors were unlocked, or there was access. Residential, 21% of them, there was no forced entry, so that, meaning the doors were unlocked, or there was a window, or usually a pet door, or a side garage door for their kids or something. So, we're going to work on some of this with better education and outreach to folks to basically lock their stuff down. And I realize, in comparison to other jurisdictions down in Sacramento, we have a low crime rate, I get that, but we have Highway 50 that goes right through our city, and there's some nefarious subjects that go on that highway, and they look at our city as a perfect place to come and commit their crime. All right? Under the assaults, so, 6% of them were, well, I guess I could total this up, more than, do some quick math, almost 40% of them were domestic violence-related. Some were just classified as abuse. Then, there was a simple battery. And then, DV, domestic violence with injury, that was 12%. And I want to, side note, thank Councilmember Taylor for bringing the Keep California Safe Initiative, that's going to come up in a future council meeting, that this is considered a nonviolent crime under Proposition 47 that was passed in 2014. Baffles the mind, but that's what the voters voted on, and we can talk more about that later.
Before you go on in that, do you think that, or did the, I can't understand the statistics, but do you think because the punishment isn't there anymore, that that's, it's invited it to become worse, or, no, yes, I don't know, maybe you don't even know?
I, I could talk for an hour on that, Councilmember Borelli, but I don't, I don't want to keep you here.
Well, in other words, if a guy's going to do, you know, beat up his wife or something, I mean, now he thinks, "Well, I won't get in trouble." I mean, is that the mindset?
That could be part of it, but I don't have the specific data on that. I was going to bring, I'm going to bring some of that back to you-
Okay.
...when we talk about the Keep California Safe Initiative, because more of that is related to some of the property crimes, but that trails down to these guys that know that they're going into Home Depots and Targets and Walmarts with calculators, and knowing that if they don't steal at least $950 worth of merchandise, that it's a misdemeanor.
Right, and I knew about that.
And they're not going to get, those same people are also what I'll call the cross offenders that are doing other things, like the drug offenses and the domestic violence. And if all of that stuff has been made misdemeanors or nonviolent crimes, as it has been since 2014, then yes. The answer to your question is, "Hey, if I don't have any consequences, why do this? Why, why do I care?"
Okay.
We'll talk more about that later, but thank you for asking that. Okay, this, this page just goes, shows you, again, a five-year comparison, and the aggravated assaults, like I said, they went up by a couple numbers last year. So, I'm going to have, ask my staff to go or work with the Center for Violence Prevention, Violence-Free Relationships, and see if there's some more work we can do there in prevention and education, is to make sure people understand that any kind of violence is unacceptable. Again, aggravated assault, simple assault, so the simple assaults are down, the aggravated assaults are slightly up, and then you can see the five-year trend there. So, simple assaults are down by 8%. This is the property crimes I talked about. I already commented on the auto thefts, I'll just leave it at that. Simple theft, which is larceny, is down, however, the burglaries are, show an increase. And again, we're, I'm going to work with our staff to see what kind of outreach we can do in better education of both the business community and the residential community. So, here are some statistics that I'm actually very happy to see. So, just to review, so dispatched versus officer-initiated calls, I think- So just to review, so dispatched versus officer-initiated calls, I think that makes pretty much sense. Officer-initiated means that they have, they're the ones that are on viewing, preventative calls for service, on patrol, in the areas where they know that there's gonna be concern. The dispatched calls for service related to people that identify, or we have identified as transients, as you can see, dispatched last, the year before in 2018, was 1,342, and that is down to 820 last year, representing a 39% drop. Officer-initiated was 993 in 2018, and that has dropped to 744 in 2019. As you know, the last six months of 2019, we have had an officer assigned to the hot team, interacting with all of our social service agencies, Marshall Medical, various nonprofits, members of the faith community, to assist these individuals in getting the assistance they need. And I don't wanna keep repeating what you have all heard me say, but here is the data to show that we believe this is making a difference. I believe that we can do even better, and I'm hoping that when we look at this data, I wanna look at it like every six months from now on, that we'll see an even further drop in these numbers. So it is unfortunate that there are none of those folks here to see this data. I would hope that they review the videotape, and they can look at the handout, and see that we are trying, as a city, as Councilmember Thomas has alluded to, to make a difference and address the homelessness in our community. But it's not just the homelessness, it is all of the other issues related to mental illness and substance abuse, that I really believe we're making a positive difference here. So again, I'm just sorry they're not here to see this data. So the number of arrests, felony versus misdemeanor, which again, because of realignment, Prop. 47, Prop. 57, almost, it's almost a gray area, but we still classify one versus the other. And I say that because you used to go, it used to be in the old days, even just 10 years ago, if you committed a felony, you risked going to prison. If you committed a misdemeanor, you risked just going to county jail. And now it's almost everybody who goes to county jail, and not as many people are going to prison, which can be a good thing if, if crime is going down. So there's the numbers there. There's, there's not too much science to that. Everything is down. I'll put an asterisk to that. I don't wanna say that's necessarily good. What a lot of that has to do with is the continued decriminalization of a lot of crimes. And things that used to be felonies are no longer felonies. I just use the example of how theft, you know, theft used to be $400 or above was grand theft, and below was petty theft, so. Again, this is just our overall calls for service, dispatched versus officer-initiated. Now, so this shows that we had a 4% decrease in calls for service from 2018 to 2019. I view that as good. Now, you might look at calls for service, officer-initiated, as an increase of 27%. In our business, that's good. That means the officers are taking more time to be more proactive, looking for not only the criminal activity like thefts, burglaries, robberies, but also drunk drivers on our roads, which unfortunately, we, we're gonna get to another slide that shows an increase. But that might be because the officers are having more time, and they are better educated, because we have sent them to some training, to look for impaired driving. So I look at these numbers as positive, even though officer-initiated calls are 27% higher, that's the bread and butter of preventative policing. Here's the DUI arrests. So I just said a minute ago, they've increased this year. We have education to do, and we continue to do that through our traffic grant, through the Office of Traffic Safety. And as I said, our officers are better aware and better trained to detect a DUI driver. And this isn't just alcohol, this is prescription drugs, and even cannabis, even though cannabis is going to be legal, and we're going to have dispensaries. It is still illegal, just like it's illegal to drive with legal alcohol in your system. It's illegal to get into a car and get on the highway and endanger everyone else.
Chief, is there, do you, on those numbers with that, do you have any sense of what the breakdown is, like alcohol-related versus drug and/or cannabis or prescription drugs?
Just off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor, that's a good question. Most of this is alcohol. I don't have that off the top of my head. I can, I always make notes on what you ask, and I bring it back next year. So that'll be one of my notes that I bring back next year, is if I can break it down, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
If it's possible. This is just a day-of-the-week analysis, like, and the areas of town, where, and the time. So day of week, time, and parts of town. So Main Street seems to be the place to not be when you're driving drunk. Actually, I don't want anybody driving drunk, but this is where the majority of them were this past year. So time of day, of course, what we used to, what, as an old graveyard officer, I used to call that the witching hour, O-200. So, because we say when those that work graveyard, nothing, nothing good is going on after midnight. So that's why I used, I used to like working nights. My wife thought I was crazy, but I did. And then this is just a calls for service by day of week for 2019. The heaviest day was Friday. I believe last year, the heaviest day was Tuesday. There's, there's no rhyme or reason to that. It's just a stat that we pull, we pull out there. I didn't put that in there. Probably a good number of folks here don't even know what 1 out of 12 means, so. And I'm happy to answer questions for anyone.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
I've got a question.
Yep.
Thank you for this great report, and I'm really encouraged to see those numbers on the transient calls for service. So that's, that's good news. With the felony versus misdemeanors, just to be clear, those misdemeanors, what's counted as misdemeanors is drug use of any type of drugs, and theft below $950 would be counted as misdemeanors and other crimes like that?
Correct. That's a good question, Councilmember Taylor. So, yeah, so under $950, that's theft of anything. Under that is a misdemeanor. And I wanna add, that includes a firearm or a car, okay? So any gun that used to be stolen was a felony, prior to 2014. And I know I'm just whetting your appetite for when I bring that back. I mean, to me, it's just common sense. You steal a gun, that's a felony. No, not anymore. Same with a car. So if a junker is stolen, and it's not valued at $950, it's a misdemeanor. It used to be, any stolen car was a felony. So as a result, the sergeants and the officers know, if it's a junker and the guy runs, and we don't have any other reason, even if it's a stolen car, we're not chasing it. We're not, we're not gonna pursue somebody with a junk, piece of junk misdemeanor car. So regarding the drugs, okay, so before 2014, any personal amount of cocaine, heroin, methamphetamine used to be a felony, and we would arrest them for a felony. Now, they wouldn't be in custody that long, and we didn't really necessarily want them to stay in jail for that. What we wanted them to get into, and this is a discussion that's going on behind the scenes with our other partners in the county, is to get them into the treatment they needed and get them on searchable probation, so that there was a carrot, that as long as they stayed in their, what do you call it, rehabilitation, and they went to drug court and did all the things, then they could stay out of custody. And as long as they completed their probation with no further offenses, then they were good to go and off to the races. Well, that, that hammer is not there any longer, because it's just a misdemeanor. I read in the watch summaries every day, where somebody, somebody is found with a little bit of personal use of methamphetamine or heroin, and they're given a ticket. And for someone my age, that's been in this business this long, that's just, that's still a foreign concept, even though it's been on the books for six years now. And there's more decriminalization that is being attempted at the legislature, which I won't go into. The only things that are felonies for drug-related offenses now is possession for distribution or sales, or sales to a minor, things like that, so. Okay, does that answer your question, Ms. Taylor?
It does. And then one more question with the DUI analysis. Do you think that the number this, or 2019 was so much higher just because officers are doing more preventative policing and are more proactive on this, or do you think that there's actually a rise in drunk driving?
If I had to guess, it's because they have a little, as you saw in the data, a little bit more, what we call discretionary time to look for those. And we, and we have some officers on night shift who are hunters for these people, whether they're on Highway 50, and they come off of Highway 50 in the wrong lane, or, I mean, I've seen everything, and I think I mentioned maybe a couple months ago, Sergeant Cannon was parked somewhere, and some drunk driver hit his car. Thankfully, nobody was hurt, but it was that guy's bad night, right? He hit a police officer. So, so I don't have any definitive evidence to say that for sure, but that might have a little bit to do with it.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions I can answer?
I do have a question. And this may not be in your wheelhouse, but when you, when you start looking at community outreach, what is your mechanism for community outreach? Because I look, I look at what we have in terms of the city and how we reach out or don't reach out, our mechanisms for doing that. Where, where do you go?
So there's a couple of venues that we can, that, and let me preface it by saying, we can always do better. But right now, we have venues of National Night Out, I think everybody's aware of that. We do coffees with the cop on multiple occasions. We go to various health and safety fairs, other events within the community, and make sure that we have our crime prevention pamphlets out there. I go, and my staff go, to various venues, and we're open to questions of people coming up and asking us questions. I'm willing to meet with just anyone that wants to come and meet, or direct them to the proper staff member to meet, to come and make a presentation to a seniors group, a community group, a neighborhood watch group, a school. Our school resource officer makes presentations on vaping in our community right now is huge. So between our tobacco grant and our SRO, we're really kinda trying to drill down on that. That's out of control, every day I read. I would like to do more, but I have to balance it with the number of staff members I have, so. But the easiest way, the great thing about working in a city of our size, is I see people every day, all day long. And I belong to various groups within the city, including the Marshall Foundation for Community Health. I sometimes just walk on Main Street in my uniform and answer questions from the merchants. I've never turned down a meeting with anyone, so. Anyone that wants to meet with me or one of my staff members, we're accessible. So that answers your question, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll open it up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, thank you, Chief Ortega. That was a great report. I would like to put a sign out that says, would you like to have your car stolen? Leave your keys in and put a sign in the window that says, please steal this car.
Mr. Mayor, I could just add one thing, too. We have a very helpful community here that we could not do, we couldn't do this job without the support of our community. Obviously, the City Council, I'm very grateful and humbled by your support. But there's a lot of community partners out there that I would love to be able to name, but I know you don't wanna listen to me for an hour. And that includes members in Department of Education, both of the school districts that serve our community, Marshall Hospital, more business owners than I can name that graciously assist us and help us accomplish our goal of maintaining a low crime rate. But I'm one of those guys that I'm always going, well, we need to lower this even more, so. Each year, when we, when these, when this data comes out, my staff and I sit down and figure out ways and strategies as to how we can do better, so. But our community's support is unmatched, in my opinion, in this region, so. Sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt public comment, but I think that might be it, so.
Yeah, you were saying, you were on safe ground there.
We don't have a whole lot of public.
Chief, thank you, and your officers, for everything that you do to protect our community. I had a, I think it was a little over a week ago, I was leaving dinner and coming out of the garage, and somebody was tagging or drawing something on the wall, kind of, it looked like maybe transients, and called dispatch. There was probably an officer there in a minute. And unfortunately, you know, they ran off, I think, because I probably scared them, because I stopped when I, because I couldn't believe they were just drawing on the, on the wall. And, I mean, the officers were great.
And you didn't jump out?
I didn't jump out, yeah, no, I didn't go and chase them. And, you know, it was frustrating, too, for the officers, because they say, you know, even if we caught them, maybe we give them a ticket, but that's all we can really do, you know, unless they had a weapon or something on them. But, you know, there's not, because of some of the rules nowadays, it's, it's very difficult to, I mean, there's a little bit of impunity out there. I mean, I had my car broken into in Sacramento, broke my back window. And the one time, I forgot to put my, my briefcase in the trunk, you know, just getting out for like 15 minutes. And sure enough, I mean, I called the police, and they're like, well, you just go online and file out, fill out a report. They don't even come out to take a report anymore for something like that. And, you know, and that easily costs, I mean, it was actually over $1,000, you know, with damage and what I lost, but, you know, nonetheless, that's just kinda where you're at nowadays when it comes to those tough, those crimes of opportunities that are out there for folks.
Yeah, we constantly struggle within the California Police Chiefs Association, so we all talk to each other, and we have an annual conference and regional meetings of how to mitigate, and I'm preaching to the choir for you, Mr. Mayor, for sure, as to what goes on in the Capitol, and then what we have to do to combat some of the measures that are just working against us. But I'm gonna tell you something, none of us give up. And we're gonna get creative, and we're gonna do whatever we need to do to keep our community safe, and take those measures that keep everyone safe, and, including the homeless community, because they are part of our community, and we look after them, too, in spite of what may have been said earlier in this meeting, so.
Well, thank you, Chief, and we look forward to that upcoming presentation.
Yeah, I, I'm more excited about that, I think, than this, because it's an initiative that's on the November ballot, and there's gonna be a battle, a public battle over that. But I have a package all ready for you to see, and you'll see the data, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. Well, I'll just say, I know which one it is, and you can definitely add my name on there.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just thank, thank you for the time, and thank your staff for compiling all this information for us and, and the community. And it is a shame that there are, we have Sue Rodman, who is always faithfully in attendance, but the folks that needed to hear the services that the police do provide are not here at this point. But you are doing a great job, and your staff is also, and it is a quality of life issue, is why people wanna move here, is because we are a safe community. That's hugely important. And I like the 12 touch, so. Whoever threw that in, that's pretty good.
That would be our crime analyst, Shirley Patty. And I didn't know it when I looked at this at first, until it popped up here, and I went, oh, perfect.
You know what? One thing I noticed tonight, really, I mean, there were, we, we know what's going on, but several of them did thank you.
They did.
And I think that that's a plus.
I, because I've met with many of them, and they know where I stand, even Mr. Gainsborough. And he and I have talked many, many times. He knows, he knows what we're trying to do.
Right.
So.
But, but, I mean, the homeless folks themselves, you know, they acknowledged that the police community was helpful. I mean, they, I didn't, I don't think I remember any of them just really derogatory against anything. And that's all changed, because it never used to be that way. I mean, you know, they had a lot of, they blamed you for everything, so.
I'm very proud of my Police Department and how they address our community, not just the business community, all of the community, including those that are marginalized and usually the forgotten. We care about all of them, and we don't wanna see any of them harmed. And I, I say that to them regularly, so I'm hoping they, they hear my message. And they also hear it from our officers on the street, and it's seen by the demeanor of when we do periodically audit our, as you all know, we have body-worn cameras on all of our officers. So we periodically just look at those, and I couldn't be more proud of our officers. I don't know how else to put it, but.
Well, you know, it must take a tremendous amount of fortitude on their part. I mean, when, when they encounter the same person over and over and over for the same reasons, and, but they still, you know, are helpful and compassionate about, you know, it's a frustrating, I'm sure, position that you guys are in a lot of times.
But we feel like we're making some headway here, and that's-
Obviously, yeah.
And that's the real positive. Like, if we were just spinning our wheels, then I would look at that, and I think you would all agree with me, well, we need to change our strategy. But now, we're looking at it like, well, what more can we do? In partnership with the County of El Dorado, because I can't leave them out. We couldn't do this without their help.
Right, right.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to item 12.2. Adopt a resolution authorizing the Engineering Department to release construction contract documents for public bidding for the Spring Street pavement rehabilitation from Coloma Road to Bedford Avenue, Project CIP 41907, and the Mosquito Road stabilization, Dimity Lane to City Limits. And this is Ms. Neves, and I'm very excited to hear this one finally.
Why?
Now that we've all lost the undercarriage of our cars, that drive up there quite frequently.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Saragosa, Vice Mayor Thomas, and council members. Well, this is an item, as the mayor pointed out, that just about everybody has wanted to see for quite some time, especially council and staff. As you know, when Measure L was passed back in 2016, Spring Street and Mosquito Street were ranked amongst the highest of the roads in the community wished to see improved with the use of the Measure L funds. When the first of the Measure L revenue came into the city in June of 2017, we were happy to add these projects to the capital improvement program lists. But nothing worthwhile is easy, nor is it fast. Unfortunately, these two roads have followed that theory to a T. As staff investigated both roads, both were found to be in need of underground utility improvements, something that is also important to the service life of paving and the purpose and use of Measure L. Rather than taking the quick and easy approach of putting a Band-Aid over a bullet hole, staff took the time that it was needed to assess utility improvements for both Spring Street and Mosquito Road before proceeding to paving. Mosquito Road was found to need a lot of utility improvements. Staff proactively assessed the utilities and determined that in the interest of time, creating a separate contract to address all the utilities would be the best for the preservation of the local funding and best delivery of the project. That contract, as you know, is Mosquito Road Phase 1 and is currently under construction thanks to Measure L and the citizens that voted in favor of it. Staff also found that Spring Street needed utility improvements, and the longest delay was finding out where and how much. After a lot of field reconnaissance, the utility and segments in need of critical repair have been designed. These included replacement of lead water service goosenecks and repair and replacement of key segments of storm drain. The amount, however, pales in comparison to the work currently under construction for Mosquito Road, hence why those improvements were not designated to a separate contract. Staff also looked at options for efficiently repaving both roads. Under the recommendation of two different geotechnical engineers, repaving through full depth reclamation was recommended for both Spring Street and vast portions of Mosquito Road, or FDR, as full depth reclamation is referred to. FDR has been utilized for quite some time and is essentially recycles the existing road in place and uses it as the new road base. Both Spring Street and Mosquito Road were found to have inadequate road base for the traffic loading. Spring Street in particular had two inches of asphalt on native, with no road base present at all. Given that piece of information, Spring Street actually performed extremely well under its service life. But obviously, that service life has now reached its end, and we're all collectively ready to repave these two roads. Staff provided a link to a video in the report that does a decent job of showing and explaining the FDR process for those that you are interested. It's pretty fun for the nerds in us. However, we do like to also stay agile in our options for how to best deliver projects to maximize savings and efficiency to our community. Upon review of the paving recommendations, and given that FDR is a specialty approach to paving, staff thought it would be more efficient to send both Spring Street and Mosquito Road paving contract out as a combined bid package to utilize the combined quantity. Additionally, to keep the bidding environment competitive, the specifications for the combined bid documents do include the option to the contractor to set the means and methods for standard paving. What this means is that if a contractor can deliver the paving portions of the project more efficiently and cost-effective than through the FDR method, the city is not limited to awarding on the basis of methods, but on the basis of quality of final product at the best price. This is actually a pretty common spec. City of Folsom utilizes it for several other jobs. With that, staff's request before you this evening is to allow the release of the combined bid documents for Spring Street, Mosquito Road repaving for public bidding. Bid documents will be released this coming Thursday, with the bid opening scheduled for April 2nd, construction contract award by council on April 28th, and construction starting around June 1st lasting approximately three months, but potentially sooner than that. Although frustrating for all of us, the delay it took to adequately assess the utilities for both Spring Street and Mosquito Road turned out to be a blessing in disguise. It gave Measure L long enough time to bank the construction funding it needed while not inhibiting the delivery of other important projects that were ready for construction, such as the Sierra Tank Bypass, Pacific Street repaving, Ray Lawyer Drive and Fairlane repaving. All of these projects required resources, not just in the form of money, but also in the form of staff time. We know it's been quite literally a long, bumpy road to get here, but staff is extremely grateful for council and the community's patience as we work towards doing these two projects right as opposed to speedy. In the long run, the community will have a better product to enjoy for many years to come. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for Rebecca? Any questions?
Just amen.
Amen. I like that. Me, too. I'll open it up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Measure L Committee. Hooray. We've looked at this one for years and years and years as our media's come and go, and really happy to do this and do it right. That was one of the things that Measure L was based on, was let's fix our infrastructure from the bottom up. Let's fix the pipes and stuff that's underneath the roads so that when we pave the roads, they aren't immediately dissolved by the leaking pipes underneath them. So, I am really happy to see this one coming all the way through. Good job, Rebecca.
Thank you. I think it's safe to say I can close public comment. Bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the Engineering Department to release construction contract documents, et cetera, et cetera, under recommendation. I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Yep. Thank you, Patty.
I agree with that, but I'd also like to just make a quick comment, too.
Yep, of course.
I'd just really like to applaud our city engineer and the Engineering Department for their creativity and resourcefulness in combining these two bids and saving taxpayers, what was it, $125,000, $164,000?
No, that's a lot.
That we can put towards other projects. So, I was really happy to see that. And I'm excited about the prospect of the reclaimed asphalt. I think that's cool.
Did you watch the video?
I didn't watch the video yet, but I will watch the video. But I like the idea of that. I hope that that ends up being the best option. That's cool.
All right. Any other comments from council?
No, I just say congratulations and thank you for hanging in on this and getting this done. It's hugely important and it really, really will make a huge statement for the Measure H and L process.
Yeah, and again, yeah, thanks. And I'm glad you've also brought up the point of, you know, there's only so many arms, legs, hands that can do these things at staff level as well. So, you know, we've been moving steadily along, we're punching above our weight in terms of delivering projects. And so, I think it's always important to know that there's only so many of these that we can do at one time. So, again, thank you for bringing this forward to us. With that, any other? I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item 12.3. Adopt a resolution ratifying construction contract change orders 40, 47, 49, 50, 51, and approving contract change orders 45 and 48 in a total combined amount of $96,222.20 with Doug Verkamp, General Engineering, for the Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2 project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And again, this is Ms. Neves.
Thank you. The item before you proposes ratifying the change orders and approval of the change orders as mayor summarized and as the recommendation in the staff report. This project is approaching our closeout with a few minor items related to Caltrans acceptance remaining, mostly related to the detention basin. The change orders before you this evening include work for that item and in completion of other items of work previously approved under the city manager's signatory authority delegated by council when the construction contract was awarded in January of 2018. Change orders 45 and 48 are before you this evening for approval since they exceed the delegated signatory authority amount of $25,000. Staff anticipates issuing a notice of completion within the next couple of months, along with rese of partial and/or complete retention to the contractor. Also, as a bit of good news to council, staff was recently notified that the construction management firm under contract, Dewberry Drake Haglen, will be returning approximately $200,000 to the city from their contract because they were able to deliver the project more efficiently than originally anticipated. Staff will be returning back to council at a later date with that deductive amendment. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and that concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for?
Where does that money go if we get it back?
As far as the funds returned to the project, they, you know, anything that we don't use that's a federal state fund, go back to the sources. In this particular instance, you know, there's been, it'll just basically kind of supplement some of the mitigation budget, but whatever we don't use goes back. And specifically, if it's CMAC, it actually goes back to the Transportation Commission, which can be used on another project here locally. As far as the STIP money, I have to defer to the Transportation Commission because I know we get our allotment. And the allotment for this project actually banked several years of STIP funds for the county. So, does that answer, and obviously transit funds that are unused are returned to transit.
So, that's the $200,000 that we get?
That is actually a compilation of all the funding sources, you know, because, you know, when you're working on a construction contract, you're not just working on just the road or just the CMAC eligible components, such as either, you know, the trail or the park and ride. So, as you work on different things, they're kind of, they've actually been essentially prorated based on the amount of work that's contained within the contract. So, if there's, I'm going to use a hypothetical number, if there's a 35% of the contract is just on the Class 1 trailer that was just built, then 35% of a contract for a consultant would be designated to that funding source, too. Kind of the cost of the weight of the job is carried through the cost of the weight of the effort to deliver it. Does that answer it?
Thank you.
Sorry.
It might be easier to just spend it.
So, 35% then would be returned to?
That was a hypothetical number. It's some other percentage. I can't remember exactly what it is.
90% general fund Placerville.
Right, exactly. Yeah, unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at it right now, this particular phase does not have any city local funding on it. So, you know, we did very well at flipping over the state and federal couch cushions and found the funding to deliver this project, as well as having amazing local partners, such as Transit and the county and the Transportation Commission. So, and Caltrans, too, actually, for that matter, there's shop funds on this project as well. And so, those items would be returned to the various sources that's unspent.
I have a question. Speaking of Caltrans, and I spoke with Cleve a little bit about this, but could you talk a little bit about change order number 45?
Sure.
The $30,000 to investigate the water and make changes to the detention basin design?
Sure, I'm happy to. Yeah, so, when we go through a design process, we do a design for detention basin, we do what's called a stormwater data report. The report gets routed through Caltrans and everybody at the end of it, before they issue your encroachment permit, basically holds hands and sings kumbaya on the design.
That's what I figured would happen.
Yeah, that includes the detention basin. However, when we, you know, before, Caltrans will accept a project, they do a couple of project walks, you know, and Hydraulics came back and had some additional comments. But the part that actually has been, for engineering, the most frustrating component of this is that maintenance came along and said, "Well, this is the first time we've seen this and we can't even, you know, like, how are we supposed to maintain this? This doesn't meet any standard that we have." And to which we reply, "We designed it to your standards. What are we missing?" So, come to find out later that in the design review process, maintenance has not been involved, a thing that we are rapidly correcting on the on-ramp design. You know, and we had a meeting out on the field and discussed it with maintenance, and I said, you know, "As a city engineer for a 166-year-old city, that gives me heartburn in a place I can't even explain to you." Because if Public Works can't maintain something, I shouldn't be put on the ground or in the ground. And so, hearing that frustration from maintenance, we have been bringing them into the process even when perhaps our Caltrans project manager hasn't really done that. So, I said, you know, "We're all family here, we're all trying to get to the same goal, so let's invite everybody to the table." They had a list of corrections that they wanted done on the detention basin. We have it in writing. We did them. They changed their mind. So, we're working through that as well.
Okay. And then that $30,000, where does that money come from? Like, what fund, is that?
That would be.
I mean, it's not city money because this whole project is funded from elsewhere, so.
Correct. That particular change order, so it actually included installation of some perforated pipes and some downspout drains, and it also included the dewatering. So, the biggest complaint that Hydraulics had was that the detention basin wasn't draining in 72 hours. And I believe I made mention of it at the last council meeting, we found out that the culvert underneath Highway 50 doesn't stop draining into that detention basin. So, that's part of the reason why that basin is constantly wet. So, we've contacted Caltrans, they did reply that the replacement of the culverts within that area, there's three of them that cross underneath Highway 50. The three culverts are being looked at as a project right now for rehab replacement. We did, with the improvements that were requested and proposed and accepted and approved, we did manage to get the basin to drain within 72 hours, and it's functioning as they requested. But maybe they, for whatever reason, they've changed their mind as far as maintainability of the improvements that they approved. So, it's a little bit of a moving target right now, but we also, you know, when we dewatered the basin, so the item description talks about dewatering, we actually did pump out the basin and discharge it and to see if it refilled, because we were looking at everything. You know, is it infiltration? Do we have perched groundwater? What's actually going on out there? And come to find out, then, looking at the culvert, that that was the big culprit of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Further questions? All right. Public comments? I'm going to go ahead and close public comments since there's nobody here.
Our public is gone.
Our public is gone. It's just our adoring public online. So, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll move that we adopt 12.3.
Second?
All right, I have a first and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item 12.4. Acknowledge and file the HDL sales tax and economic reports for the quarter ending September 30th, 2019. And Mr. Warren has his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep my comments short. The report is fairly, it speaks for itself. There are a few things I want to bring to your attention. The actual receipts for your Bradley Burns, which is your general fund sales tax, actually showed a year-over-year decrease of 3.3%. However, there's devil in the details. You may recall that the state of California implemented a new piece of software for sales tax collections back in the summer of 2018. And there was a lot of businesses that didn't, had a hard time using the new software, there was glitches with the software. And so, in the quarter ending September of 2018, there was quite a bit of correction. So, there was monies received from prior quarters in the September of 2018 quarter. So, that overinflated that quarter. And so, in September of 2019, it was more of a normal quarter. So, when you take into account the adjustments for what we call the aberrations, it actually ended up being an increase of 6.7%. So, that's good news, year-over-year. A similar story with your Measure H and J sales taxes, they showed a decrease of 11.3% year-over-year. But again, because of adjustments or aberrations, when you take those into account, you actually end up with a growth factor of 0.7%, fairly flat for both H and J. And then L, Measure L showed a year-over-year decrease of 9.9%. And then L, Measure L showed a year-over-year decrease of nine-point-nine. When you take into account the adjustments in two thousand eighteen, it ends up being, again, point-seven percent. The other thing I want to show you is, how did we do with your budget? Because that's really where the tire meets the road. And I believe I left a copy of this on the dais for you to look at. So, your budget, we actually break out your sales tax by quarter, and the Bradley Burns are your general fund sales tax, which equates to one percent of the eight-point-two-five percent. The budget was one million four-hundred-twenty-eight thousand one-hundred-sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Well, the actual was one million four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, or a twenty-thousand-dollar increase. So, we were actually above budget for your general fund sales tax by one-point-four percent. So, we actually exceeded our budget. Measure H and J were both up by about two-point-six percent. Measure L is still developing because it's a relatively new sales tax. There are businesses that are either over-reporting or under-reporting, and those are flushing out. HDL is helping us with that. But, so it was actually, it had, it did have a decrease of about seven, little over seven-thousand dollars, or one-point-three percent. But overall, when you look at all of our sales taxes, it was an increase over budget of twenty-seven thousand one-hundred-seventy-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, or one-point-oh-five percent. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the report.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any questions? Comments?
Well, just, thank you.
You're very welcome.
You went through a fair bit of effort in working with HDL to make sure that, and, you know, those, you know, just getting businesses to get, to pay the right taxes is a bit of a challenge. I don't want to belabor this point, but I remember when I did returns for my business and I got audited by the state, I actually returned them on the wrong quarter, and I ended up having to pay more or less, I can't remember what it is. So, there's, you know, it's not exactly easy, but I think another opportunity to reach out to our business community and get that seven-thousand dollars is, you know, that's a manual or something, I don't know.
It's half a squad car.
Yeah, it's worth something, so it's, you know, it's across the board. So, anyway, thank you for putting this together.
You're very welcome.
Other comments? All right, seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Are we done? I want to make sure I thank Mr. Warren, and I appreciate the hard work. I think it's important, it helps all of us track what's going on. You know, appearances can be deceiving sometimes. We think traffic on the highway equates into nothing but golden tax dollars, and it's not always that way. It's good to know how we're doing with our budget, and I always enjoy the top twenty-five businesses. And, you know, it's always interesting to see what's driving that and the importance of lumber in this town and car sales. And happy to see that Diamond Pacific is back on there, which is a contractor's favorite, and of course, the Thompson Group is a huge input to the city. So, thank you for your hard work.
You're very welcome.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Warren. All right, moving on to item twelve-point-five, authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for AB ten-eighty and SB fifty-four, supporting the California Circular Economy and Plastic Pollution Reduction Act. And Mr. Morris has this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item was something that came from the League of California Cities requesting that we consider support for these two bills. Mayor Sargosha knows more about this than I do, I think, but so I'll let him chime in on it as far as the status of these bills and what's going on with them. They're actually identical bills that will eventually probably wash out just the one that will move forward.
Correct.
The only points I want to make, and I'll go into what they do just briefly, that's on the second page of the report, but I want to just remind you that recently, we went through some things where we actually had to start charging our citizens for recycling, which is something we, I've been in California for almost thirty years now, and that's one of the first things I did when I came here, was worked on recycling, and this is the first time I've really seen that, where it's came back, said we need to now charge for recycling. And so, the purpose of these bills is to, an attempt to try to resolve that. In the end, we probably pay for it one way or the other. We pay for it in what we require the packaging to do, or we pay for it through this recycling. So, if you look at the second page of the report, it talks about how the bill is designed to require those that, the manufacturers of single-use packaging achieve a seventy-five percent reduction of waste generated from that packaging by twenty, thirty. So, it's a tall order to do that, but you can think about some of the things that you, your packaging, that it comes and you immediately throw it in to be recycled or get rid of. I get frustrated, I know myself, with some of these plastic things that are wrapped around the thing.
Oh, my God.
You can't get them open. But, those are the type of things, I think, some of the things are trying to go after. You can also see it talks about the priority, single-use products defined in single-use foods, service ware, plates, bowls, cups, utensils, stirs, and straws. We've heard a lot about straws, I know, in the last couple of years, and things are happening. There are changes that have been done. So, the key to this bill, in talking to Mayor Sargosha, is that these bills, I would say, there's not a lot of detail in them yet, there's still rewrites that have to take place with these. And so, I think the concept is something that we probably should support. The question we still have is what will be the details in the bills and what will be required of us, perhaps, as a city, as far as enforcement that might be required? And as far as I can tell, we don't really know that yet. It's just kind of the conceptual ideas that are in the bill. So, I think we support the concept, whether or not the council is ready to support, send letters of support for these bills at this time. I'll leave that up to you. With that, I'll try to answer any questions, and I'll let Mayor Sargosha answer questions, too, because I know he's got some knowledge of what's going on with these, so.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. It's late already.
No, thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Questions from council members?
Well, it seems kind of like we're not sure. So, how can we support something that we're really not sure about?
Well, I'll give a little bit more background on these two bills. So, there's two bills, AB ten-eighty and SB fifty-four, they're companion bills. They introduced one in the Assembly, one in the Senate, so that hopefully, depending on how the politics works out, one reaches the other House, and then they generally will consolidate. Both of these bills have been on the inactive files since September of twenty-nineteen, mostly due to a huge amount of opposition from pretty much every business sector in California, because it places a lot of the responsibility on CalRecycle. CalRecycle is currently operating at a deficit, and according to the, even from Appropriations Committee, it's saying it would take ten million dollars a year, and then, let's see, where is it at here? Unknown, but likely significant enforcement costs after twenty-twenty-four, and the tens of millions of dollars annually to ensure compliance with this bill. These costs would be offset by a fee on producers that would be established by this bill. That fee hasn't been established. They do talk about fifty-thousand-dollar-a-day fines for not meeting these goals. I think we all want to meet these goals and reduce our footprint of waste going into landfills. I don't think there's any argument there. I do think there's still some serious questions, though, about the efficacy of these bills without a lot of details to how the department will ultimately decide how this works, if those dates are feasible, and if those costs are correct. Because I hate to be able to, I hate to say that we'd support something only to have, you know, all of our businesses in the community be affected by it negatively, without us kind of coming to a more comprehensive solution. My understanding is that there is legis, there is new language being worked on that hasn't been released yet, unfortunately. Some of it is just the game in Sacramento that's being played, is who can get their part of the, who can get themselves taken out of the bill, kind of like AB five, where, you know, if you have the right people lobbying for you, you can potentially get yourself X-ed out of the bill. So, there's a little bit of that going on. So, you know, I usually agree with everywhere where the league is on something. I think this one's a little bit premature. My recommendation would be just to stay neutral at this point and wait for more information to come out, but certainly, that's just my recommendation.
Well, that's kind of the way I felt, you know, the unknown. I just hate to write a letter of support of something that we, like you said, we really don't know what we're, you know, and who it's going to affect and et cetera, et cetera.
Seems like this is going to be another one of the programs where the state has a good intention, but they reach way out over their skis so far that it can't be accomplished without us spending an ordinary amount of money, which sounds like another unfunded mandate. So...
Without...
Neutral or no, thank you, is my position.
Table this until final language comes out?
Yeah, I think, you know, if the league sends it back to us, I mean, we basically have until almost September to get what this language will look like. My guess will be sometime after the May revise, we'll probably see language that's a little bit clearer on it, because they'll probably have to look for some money in the budget as well if we're going to be able to fund this and get it out of Appropriations Committee.
Quick question. Do we know how Eldorado Disposal feels about this and where they stand on it? Because I think it's in the staff report that, you know, in twenty-fifteen, they were being paid forty-eight dollars a ton, and now they're paying almost seventy dollars a ton to recycle. So, this is a reality that, you know...
I did talk to Eldorado Disposal about it. They do not oppose it. I know some waste haulers I've heard do oppose it. I think their position is kind of similar to what ours is right now, kind of wait and see what actually comes out of it. They were fine with me bringing the letters forward to you for a recommendation, but they, they're kind of neutral on it right now to see what actually comes out of the actual language.
So, they, haven't they been mandated to reach a certain goal by a certain time?
Well, we have been, the city has been.
But, I mean, the Eldorado Disposal, aren't they under the gun for, so how...
In terms of recycling, so you're saying?
Yeah, and what went, and keeping a certain, not so much into the landfill? I mean, there's all kinds of...
They aren't. The cities and counties are.
I thought they were...
No, the, it's a private agency that hauls for us.
Helping out, okay.
So, it's us that is required to do that, not them.
So, how is the city then, in comparison to the county? Because the county has the biggest share naturally, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, it's all on a percentage of, you know, of what your total waste is and what you're recycling and what you're able to get out of the waste stream. So, we're doing okay. I'm looking at Pierre, he sits on that committee with the county, and we're not the best, but I don't think we're the worst. We're doing okay. How's that?
I like that. We're doing okay.
We're doing okay. We're doing well enough to not get fined.
What I don't really understand is that, and it's in the report, too, and I keep hearing it over and over, is that recyclables are just not being accepted anymore. So, what are we going to, how are they going to remedy that if nobody will take them?
Well, that's what this bill's trying to address by cutting down at the source.
At the source, I get that.
If I remember right, too, there's also some potential language to try to create new markets for recycled materials as part of this also, so...
Okay. I just wanted to be sure I read it right, so, okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's another thing in this bill. There's a sort of chemical recycling in terms of taking plastics that can't be recycled in a mechanical way to be able to do it in a, with chemistry. That's not included in this bill, so that you do have, like, plastics that now that we have to throw in the trash instead of throwing into recyclables, but still be able to be used again, but it would be done in a chemical way, but there's been some pushback there, too. But, that's another reason why a lot of business entities are opposing it as well, because they think that there's still an opportunity to use those, that there's not just an end of life to them, they can still be used again, but there's a disagreement in the Capitol over that.
What? Never, unheard of.
I know, never.
So, it sounds like we're recommending that we wait until we get clear of language on the bills.
Yeah, so is that, I don't think I need to do a vote.
Do you need a motion for that?
I think it would just be, we're staying neutral.
I think we'll do it this time, just continue to monitor and bring back as there's more information or changes.
Yep.
Do we need a letter to go to the league to tell them? Okay.
We're standing by. Standby letter.
Okay, council reports. Eldorado County Transit Authority.
Haven't met, have you?
No, not this round.
I don't think any, well...
We met earlier. No.
Nothing in transportation. LAFCO?
We meet tomorrow night, five-thirty. I'll see you all of you there.
SECOG, we just met, we had a presentation basically on trails, on a sort of a statewide trail network, and how Sacramento kind of plays into that. It's, I mean, it's basically, you know, where the funding is right now on things, especially with a real switch on CTC in terms of where their overall aim is going to be, it's going to be changed. And so, there was just a discussion on how to leverage existing dollars to go towards more trails throughout the region. I'm not sure, I mean, it's great. My only concern is, we still got a lot of pavement out there that we need to do things with, and that's just a, you know, a philosophical question that the state is now going in a different direction.
It seems like it's been that way, though. I mean, look at how well we've done with our, you know, that's where we're getting most of them.
Yeah, that's where the money's, that's kind of where it's at. Firesafe Council, Patty?
Yes, I attended the last firesafe meeting, and we had a presentation, and maybe some of you have already seen it, by Robin and Mark Stanley. It's a couple who has, they're going around with the, they're, she's a UCCE master gardener, and he's retired CAL FIRE fire chief, and so they put a program together, and they're visiting anyone that wants to hear about the, it's called Firewise Landscaping and Defensible Space, and they're explaining all the, and then I was going to address some of the things that Sue Rodman talked about. I stayed for the business meeting, and we talked about the grant updates, the outreach programs. We had a booth at Battle of the Badges event Saturday night, and we had all the paraphernalia that we have. There wasn't a whole lot of interest because people kept seeing our booth and they kept coming up for chili, which we didn't have. We had candy, and it went over really well. But, the interest is there, and we kind of lesson learned what we need to do to improve our booth a little bit, and so, and then we talked about the grants. Some of these grants have to have, they have to have matching. So, we have got some fundraisers that were, and one is a sign, and it's, it's for, it's for, they're large signs that identify your property, and a lot of folks don't have those, unfortunately, and I think that it's being offered at a really good cost, which is, let's see, cost of one sign with up to five numbers on both sides is twenty-five dollars, and for the metal post, it's five dollars, and they're really attractive, and it really identifies your property. A lot of it for ambulance and fire as well, you know, so, and then we have, we have some, they call them go-bags, and they're bags that have our logo on it, and then all the information of things that you should put in this bag so that in case you have to vacate in a really quick manner, it's ready to go. And we're going to have, we're partnering with the city of Placerville, we're going to have a fire workshop, a public workshop, and Cleve's been in contact, talking with the folks, and so, I think it's going to be, really be a good information. And our chief was there, and I thank you again for coming, and our fire chief, and anyway, and the Battle of the Badges was a complete success. I think they made a lot of money for New Morning. A lot of folks attended, and chili was... A lot of folks attended, and chili was wonderful. So, we're going to try and go to more of these events with our little booth.
Thank you, Patty. Chief Cordero, anything you want to report on?
I thought the presentation at the Firesafe Council was really well done, and it was well-attended, which was good to see.
Yes.
And the Eldorado County firefighters, I think they took second in their booth and their chili, but I think the pudding was rigged.
Thanks, Chief. Who was first? Was it the DA?
The DA took first place for chili, and it was good.
It might have been rigged.
It could have been rigged.
I don't know. All right, thank you. All right, so item 14, request for future agenda items. I know we had this early conversation regarding the National Park idea. I'm not going to get in, I don't want to get into a rather long conversation here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Briefly. I want to thank Terry for reading Jackie Noe's comments and her position as a chair of that commission. And I think it would serve us wise to follow those recommendations. And I think one of the things that stuck with me was that group or that process receiving a letter of intent from the National Park Service. I mean, that's the credibility that this needs before the hundreds of hours of staff time and millions of dollars to creating this. It's a great vision, but that's what it is. And I think we've followed our own process correctly, and I think it would be wise if we did not pursue this any further until such time as they come back, just as outlined by the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Acuna, do I hear any differing thoughts on that? All right, seeing none, then that's kind of, that's where we'll be on that. I do.
Oh, sorry. Could I just mention on that? I do believe that we may get a request from them also to make a presentation to the Planning Commission. Can I take from that that you don't feel it's necessary at this time? That, or how would you like us to respond to that?
Yeah, I think that's correct. At this point, that would be, the direction of council would be to have it more flushed out and.
And you want it to come back to you in the future rather than to one of these other committees? Or what's your direction there?
I just assume, because it's going to ultimately come back to us anyways, that it just come to us on this particular issue.
I just want to see more concrete backing from their, I mean, presentations are great, but they're very time-consuming, and, you know, I just don't think it's necessary unless we have something to, that they have something to back it up with.
And I think there probably needs to be a special meeting when it does happen, because, I mean, the Parks and Rec one was two hours for that presentation.
Was it that long?
So, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we should do it at a council meeting.
I just wanted to let Pierre know and for us to know if she does make that request to the Planning Commission, because she has mentioned that, that we know how to respond to that. So, thank you.
Yep.
Would it be the Parks Commission that would send, theoretically send it to move on forward? Or are we waiting? I guess we're waiting for the Parks Commission to give it a green light?
Yeah, right now, they haven't. If they did, their action would be to recommend to the city council to consider it or to take action related to it, and they have not done that yet.
They, at the presentation, they had asked Jennifer Chapman to come back with more flushed-out details. They gave her some specifics about what they would like to see. So, they invited her back for kind of an updated presentation with more details.
Cool. Thank you.
Then that's probably the, what we should do.
Yeah, then I think, I think we have direction.
Park it there. It's fine to leave it parked.
All right, any other requests? Okay, City Manager, our staff reports.
Just quickly, Councilmember Barelli mentioned it, but we do have the Firesafe Fair that is set for March 28. That'll be from 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock in the morning, right here, or 1 o'clock in the afternoon. 9 o'clock in the morning to 1 o'clock in the afternoon. How's that? And I think we've got a lot of participation. Hopefully, we will pull it all together, and we'll be getting a lot of announcements out about that. Basically, I'd tell them, people, basically, anything related to your property and keeping it firesafe, we hope to have at that, at that fair.
Along those same lines, what, could you just give kind of a summary of other dates on the city calendar in terms of the city cleanup and?
Let me see if I've got those. April 25 is the city cleanup, correct, Terry?
That's correct.
So, April 25 for that.
And it's Rise and Shine.
For Rise and Shine, right.
Okay.
Budget Dave, the budget workshop that we tentatively have scheduled is April?
8.
April 8, thank you. And again, I think I mentioned it in one of my, tentatively, we got it scheduled for 3:00 in the afternoon, but we can do whatever you would like to do on that. Again, I'd like to get input from you individually, if you want to let me know how you would like to do that.
Didn't we already, didn't we already answer, I mean, RSVP?
As far as the date, you did. But I'm saying what format you would like to do.
Oh, that's right. You wanted the format. That's right.
Do you want me to look at bringing in a facilitator? Do you want staff to do that? Do you want all of our staff there? Do you want to, you know, how would you like to handle that? I call it goal-setting, potentially team-building, however you want to do that this year. So, just kind of think about that and let me know what your thoughts are on it, so.
Cleve, I did have one thing, and this reminded, just reminded me. We've had a couple, and I've had a couple of people come up to me and ask about, they couldn't find the ordinance, the fire ordinance vegetation on the website. If we could take a look.
We are working on improving that. I know we've got some things up there, but Pierre and I have talked about that.
We, we talked about it at our meeting the other night, and that was a complaint. And one of the fellows that's on our, on the committee said that if a person can't find something with two clicks, it's done. And, or they're done. And so, but they did, several folks on the committee complained that they weren't happy with.
We'll get that.
And then the fire workshop, that was March 28 from 9:00 to 1:00 here?
Yes, in this building. And it's more like an open house. There will be several.
Like we had before.
Yeah, they can come and get information, so, yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any other staff reports? All right, upcoming items, HCD 2G grant program for affordable housing, more industries, 2020 custodial contract, Upper Broadway bike lanes, change orders for Mosquito Road, and MOU with Local 39 for upcoming items. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.